So I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under laws, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A good evening and welcome. This business meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom in compliance with the RSU 38 policy, the E D, remote participation in school board meeting. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the marana cook.org YouTube channel. During the public participation part, please be aware that the microphones of the viewing audience will be muted except during the identified portions of public comments at this meeting, which is number four on the agenda. This is also a budget meeting and a public comment on budget items may be given at number nine D. If you'd like to speak during the public comment times, please use the chat feature if you're on Zoom to signal Mrs. Diane McGregor and she will communicate to me. In-person speakers, please sign up at the clipboard by the door. All individuals that wish to speak, whether in person or virtual, please identify yourself with first and last name and the town that you live in. Please note that individuals that do not live in our member communities may or may not be granted permission to speak at the expression of the board chair. We also ask that speakers limit their individual comments to two minutes. And if someone speaks ahead of you that has a similar view, please reference their comment. We thank you in advance for constructive comments. And I would just like to add that I am very appreciative of the community involvement that we've had and the way that everyone that has come to meetings or has spoken to us has been respectful and polite. I really appreciate that based on what I'm hearing is going on around the stage. So thank you, and I feel very grateful to live in this community and have the participation that we have. So I just wanted to say thank you.
So just so everybody knows, in-person or at home, attendance and all votes will be done through a roll call vote. So board members, when you hear your name called, please cast your vote with the three available options of yes, approve, no, disapprove, or abstain. I'm going to do a quick roll call vote and again, especially for our board members that are not with us today but over Zoom, please make sure that we can hear you and you can hear us going forward. So very quickly, Kim knew was going to be absent. Dave Gilme?
Yep, here.
Jay Parker?
Here.
Dane Wing? Nope, don't see him right now, okay. Tyler Dunn?
Here.
Awesome. Kathy Jacobs?
Here.
Melissa Tobin?
Here.
Patty Gordon?
Here.
Rebecca Lambert?
Here.
Betty Moore?
Here.
Sean Roderick?
Here.
Kelty Bodman?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. And David Twitchell?
Here.
Perfect, thank you very much.
So before we get started, I just want to remind board members of our norms. We have the norms in our folder on this yellow-orange paper. So if I could have someone volunteer to check us out during the meeting and make sure that we're following our norms and we put that to us at the end of the meeting, that would be great. Anyone want to take on that task? Kelty, great, thank you. Okay, so first on our agenda tonight is our student representative reports. So we can, you guys can decide who wants middle school or high school to go first. It's like no smokes.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Celia Bergdahl, I'm on the new team and I'm in eighth grade. On the Clotton team, Miss Stewart's ELA class, in Miss Stewart's ELA class, they have been working on informational texts, both reading and writing using unsolved mysteries as they under, as their underlying theme. Students are also choosing their own books to read independently. In Mr. Asmals' mystery, mysterious DNA class, they have been researching the difference, the different scientists that first discovered cells and first informed cell theory. They have also been studying and studying the difference of similar parts of animal and plant cells. In sixth grade math, they are currently working on equivalent expression situations. And eighth graders are finishing the unit evening and understanding of functions. On the Moose Island team in Miss Tucker's core class, they're doing their first DBQ. It's an online document about the American jury system. In Miss Turkott's core class, we have been learning about forensics and examining our fingerprints. And in Miss Hickert's core class, we have been focusing on court cases through history. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Good, thanks.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first off, um, so on Acadia, we went on a really amazing field trip recently to the lake. The main thing we did was learning how ice harvesting works, sort of like it started in the movie A Frozen. So we used multiple types of tools to hack, pull, and scoop ice. We also got to go ice fishing, which was very fun. We caught pickerel, brook trout, pike, and even a huge bass. Our UMF practicum students got to teach a math lesson about finding the volume using the ice blocks we made. So people from the DEP and a forester also came out and taught us a lot. So we learned about the lake and they showed us some tools about how to check the lake's quality. So some of these tools we actually recognized from an earlier trip on the lake canoeing. Um, so then we also learned how to identify different trees with the winter when there are no leaves. So if you want any more details, it's a kind of like journal article and it's also going to be on New Center Six tonight. Other than this, we've been preparing for ELA assessment on our book club books. So these books include Divergent, Everything, Everything, and Dreamland. We are also learning about hooking on healthy relationships. In core class, we are learning about genetics, epigenetics, kindness, gratitude, and effects on happiness. I couldn't get any math details for our team. On Sebago, I don't have a ton tonight, but I know they're working on informational writing and researching the Winter Olympics, which are coming up. On their, for their hands-on projects, they've been building chairs and carving woods to make little cars. And we're also doing a GT section for all the GT programs tonight. So first of all, it's GT art. So they come in during tutorial, which is like the time that we complete work if we haven't been missing or just work on stuff. So they started with block printing and also working on Go in the Dark paint. So after that, they worked on the pottery wheel and now they're working on individual art pieces. So some are doing wool felt things, some are still deciding. This board bought a grant from the Maryland Education Foundation to make a glass kiln for making a lot of glass using things like magnets, dishes, and other pieces of art. One student's art will go to the Portland Museum of Art and their art will go into the youth program section of that. So in GT music, they've set individual goals at the beginning of the year. So some are for help in preparing their district three audition piece, which is for chamber choir, while others wish to focus their attention on a secondary instrument. Two Fridays each month are allocated to a formal seminar where they are they're exploring key signatures, chords, and their inversions in basic piano scales. On the second half of the year, they're going to focus on techniques that will be used in writing melody and setting the melody to a chord progression. This vision is to compose their very own composition music. So in GT ELA, we're working on bringing our informational writing skills to the next level. We're also learning about the Cornell format of taking notes as well as quoting, summarizing, and paraphrasing. In GT math, we're using an accelerated program to learn different algebraic equations. We're also working on a government-sponsored project called the Cyber Mission. So this is a thing where we use science or engineering to help the community. So the sixth graders right now are making more comfortable masks for people to wear. So they, I mean, people were asking, well, the seventh graders are trying to reduce plastic usages used in the school. So the main thing we're doing is trying to replace the clamshell plastic trays with biodegradable ones. So we were researching for a while and then we went and talked with the food director, Mrs. Hall. So she explained to us how the district bought food and supplies. And because of some state laws, we can't actually buy trays unless she pays out of pocket and then, and she has to ask for reimbursement. So like, if you guys can help at all, that would be really, really helpful. Um, because I know you're in charge of most things in the district. And then in seventh graders are also trying, they're thinking about going to the high school next year once we've completed all the eighth grade standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Maybe.
Comment?
Did you get to eat any of the fish? I'm sorry. What did the eagles did?
So some eagles, I was down there for a while today. It was awesome. You guys looked like you were having a really good time, but there were no, but the eagles did come finally? Oh, good. That's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say a super quick thing about that? I got to be down there too because I was there seeing those UMF practicum students who were, who you just mentioned and it was so cool. And I just wanted to say, not only was every student I saw amazing, but Mr. Holman, Ms. Rosner, and Ms. Corrigan were, did so much work to make that happen. It was phenomenal. It was just a phenomenal day on the ice. Just had to say that.
Thank you, Patty.
Hello, I am Joseph Kuter here to report on Royal River and school-wide slash student government. For Miss Tracy's core, we've been researching to write an argumentative essay that, about a topic that we are interested in that has a counterclaim. In Marasik's core, we've been preparing to do a research project about a person from history that fits into the hero's journey. In Miss Ryder's, we have presented slideshows about different terms in physics, including Newton's first, second, and third law of motion. In Miss Jewels, we've been talking about atoms, molecules, and the three states of matter. In sixth grade math, we've been working with fractions, building students understand things of how to combine fractions through adding, subtracting, multiplying, and dividing. Seventh grade math, we have just started the geometry unit. We have learned about the shapes that result when you cut solids. We are working with angles and finding missing angles. Next, we will work with protractors to learn how to draw geometric shapes. Eighth grade math, we are covering linear functions and focusing on the slope and why intercept. In literacy, we've been talking about figurative language and poems and music. School-wide and student government, the student government has not met between the last board meetings, but they will be meeting tomorrow and talking about winter carnival. Any questions?
Thank you, Joseph. I love hearing all those details about math. That's a lot of math going on. Thank you for sharing all that. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you all for your very
You're welcome.
thoughtful reports tonight.
Hi, first we'll start with some student senate updates. Student Voices Project, the Eurosphere Dance, has recently been canceled, but they're working on the senate bulletin board and they're looking for other projects too. They're hoping to possibly host the dance later in the year, but it all depends on COVID restrictions. The outreach committee has some events lined up. First, they're going to put their clothing drive in motion, which has been in the works for a while now. And then they're going to have the annual carnation sale. The Health Center is working on their Love Is and Love Is Not project for February and they're providing information on consent. The School Spirit Committee has been working hard on planning the winter carnival. They have the majority of scheduling down and they're working on t-shirts, chaperones, and ideas for event signups, as it will have to be slightly different this year. Our technology workers have gotten the TV setup in the student center, which displays weekly and daily agendas and updates. Another TV will be put in the lobby for the same purpose soon.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm going to be talking about some of the sports and extracurricular activities. So basketball, both the boys and girls team are having a pretty good season so far. The team struggled for a short period due to some COVID cases, but once dealt with, they were back to playing normally. For skiing, it's been really good. The girls Nordic team has won two races so far and the boys has won one. And they're having a great season. Alpine is doing very well as well. The boys have won multiple races and the girls have placed multiple times. And KVACs are next week and State's the following, and there was actually a race up at Saddleback today. For hockey, varsity has a game tonight against Maslonski and JV tomorrow against Bridgeton Academy. So far, the season isn't going how the team may have hoped, but hopefully these upcoming games, we will see some improvement in their record. For theater, they're working on the production of The Little Mermaid and tickets will be available starting in mid-March. It's a show for all ages and it's coming together very nicely. Recently, a volleyball club has begun and they're meeting on Sunday afternoons. It's organized by Mrs. Graziano and Mrs. Gross. Chamber Choir, Chorus, Jazz Band, and Band were unable to perform the winter concert because of COVID restrictions. However, they filmed their performances and they'll be available for streaming soon. Some other announcements is the, this weekend, 11 students participated in the District Three Music Festival. And because of the snowstorm, the two-day festival was pushed to one day. But luckily, the students pulled it all together and they produced a great concert. At the high school, there's a new lunch schedule and there are three lunch periods now. And although the schedule change has got mixed reactions from the student body, we're hoping it'll keep us safe. And we have a new provisional principle coming soon and I think everyone is excited to see what that has in store. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocco. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Rocco? Or Cassidy?
I just have one question. What was the change for lunches?
So we have, there's, so there's three lunches now. So instead of, it used to be lunch A and lunch B, and then now there's lunch A, lunch B, and C. And they're all during the third period. So you go to lunch A and then you go to third period, or you go to third period lunch B and then back to third period. And then C is at the end of third period.
Just space kids out a little bit more.
Yeah, it's to keep people, like less people in the lunchroom and more spacing at lunch tables.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. If you don't want to stay in the rest of the meeting, you're also welcome to go home. Your choice. Do we have any citizen comments?
Mrs. Hartford, do you mind grabbing the clipboard for citizen comments?
Okay, so well, is there anybody that signed up?
Laurel.
Okay. Is that the only one?
Yeah.
Let's do, okay, Laurel. Seems you're there. Come on up.
I'm Laurel Parker from Manchester. I'm an emergency physician and a mom of two elementary students. It's hard to believe that we're just about two years into this pandemic and I'm extremely disheartened by the course things have taken in the last month. Obviously, Omicron is surging across our nation, across the world, but particularly affecting our communities. I looked at the numbers today. It looks like, if my math is right, 150 positive students in the last month. 25 staff members in the last month. This is extremely concerning, especially where we just changed COVID protocols in January. And there were some changes in there that I don't know that everyone was aware of. And unless you look at the fine details, which I had not looked at last meeting, we're a little bit missed. I find it unfathomable that we are now allowing close contacts who are unvaccinated to return to school without a quarantine. These same people wouldn't be able to go to the grocery store or anywhere else in public and yet somehow we're allowing them to go to school to sit in a classroom all day long with other students. So I don't, again, I'm not sure that everyone understands this. So if you have two children in a household that are unvaccinated and child A tests positive, child B can continue to go to school as if nothing has changed. That's extremely concerning because we know very well now that people who are pre-symptomatic or asymptomatic positive carriers can be spreading this disease. Again, if they came to my emergency room, I said, you have COVID. You need to let your close contacts know. They can't go anywhere if you're not, if your close contacts aren't vaccinated. They can't go anywhere. Now five days and then five days masked after that. And yet somehow they go to school sitting next to my child, potentially putting them at risk, putting all the rest of the students in their classroom at risk, putting all the staff at risk. Omicron is extremely infectious. We know this to be true. We need every tool in our arsenal and somehow we removed this most basic facet of contact tracing. It's extremely concerning to me. Again, I think we need to change. I know that is the standard that has been set forth by the CDC and the Department of Education, but it's up to this department, this board, to make a decision to make a more stringent policy. And I would urge you to consider that. Again, an unvaccinated sibling or child of someone who has COVID in their household can go to school and sit next to my child. What rights do I have as a parent? Right? To keep my kids safe. What rights do we have to our, what do we owe to our staff to keep them safe? Also, I hear that teachers are able to go back on day six post-COVID only if they've tested negative. And yet we're not doing that for our children, so I'd like that to be spoken to at some point. I understand there's a lot of kids. It's hard to test all those kids. I get it. But I'll tell you, I know a lot of places, a lot of workplaces that are doing that testing on day five to get people back to work on day six, almost zero percent of those people are testing negative and therefore they're not going back, which is probably good because they're still infected and they could still be potentially spreading this virus. I've said it before and I'll say it again, our healthcare system is on the brink of collapse. COVID exposures, which cause staff to be out, hospitals being full, significant delays in all of our healthcare systems because of COVID. And I'll tell you, almost every case that I have been hearing of our absences, the exposure is from their kids or from their families at home. And that puts them out of work, which means I have less staff in my emergency department. We have less staff in our clinics. Please, we need to do everything we can to keep our kids healthy so we can keep our workforce in work. So I implore you, I know that we have always sort of just gone with the standard and I appreciate that and I appreciate the masks and I want that to continue. But I'm just asking for an extra step.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you.
So do we have somebody from Zoom that? Okay, go ahead, John.
Yes, good evening. My goal for continuing to provide, provide this testimony is to help make you aware of information you may not get through normal channels and also to provide you with alternative options to help keep kids safe and in school based on my research of other school systems. Tonight, I just have three short comments. In making your decisions, you do not have to follow CDC guidelines. I want to thank Mandy for appointing me to the necessary federal and state guidelines under my FOIA request. From my reading and Jay, please correct me if I'm wrong, there are no requirements to comply with their guidelines or else forfeit funds received. In fact, the federal rules specifically give the school system great leeway in the use of the funds and in establishing policy. Specifically, I'll mention Section 18003D3 states that a local educational agency that receives funds under this title may use the funds for providing principals and other school leaders with the resources necessary to address the needs of their individual schools. And in addition, the funds can be used for training and professional development for staff of the local educational agency on minimizing the spread of infectious diseases. So I wanted to make that proposal I made to you last meeting to develop and provide educational materials and provide an immune-boosting program through the Health Center could possibly fit under those guidelines for use of the federal funds. Of course, this would, I think this would be a very innovative program and it would include additional physical exercise, stress reduction, nutrition and supplements, as I said, and getting a good amount of sleep. But if you do not want to use federal funds, then obviously I'd encourage you to use our local funds, our tax dollars. Secondly, let's talk about stress reduction. We know that mask-wearing, quarantining, and social distancing policies are increasing stress. As I have said before, I have been following other schools in other states that do not require masking or other CDC guidelines. And you in this school district have just as much COVID as they do. But their students look happier and you can see their faces. You have the power to stop following CDC policies that are hurting and stressing our students. Which brings me to my third point. I would appreciate it if you could establish a policy to take the masks off when taking pictures that are publicly posted. I'm just thinking about the seniors who look back on their yearbooks and see only pictures of someone's head and eyes. COVID cannot infect you for that short period of time. For example, the girls soccer team had an amazing year and yet when the picture of the team was posted, I could not tell one student from another. Their eyes looked sad. I am sure all the parents and the students would have wanted to see their smiling faces. And I'm sure the teachers and staff that get recognitions would also like to see that. At least their families would and clearly the students would. So if you do not adopt any of the other recommendations I have made, I hope you will make this one change when taking pictures. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, John. Is this about something other than what's on the? Okay, go ahead.
I'll calm this down so I can effectively communicate, but my name is Ethan Buck. I'm here with my wife Vanessa. Our boys go to Melbourne Elementary School. I want to say first that our boys have been out of school longer due to precautionary measures than they actually have been with, you know, sickness. So it's a little bit irritating that my, you know, we get a, we get a call, kids have to now isolate. When I call and ask questions, well, why are we, why are we isolating? Well, potential exposure. And then we start talking about, you know, this three-foot rule, this six-foot rule. It's, you know, and I, so I start talking, asking questions, nobody really has an answer for me. And start talking to nurses at the schools and none of them can make sense of much of it either. We're basically here tonight to ask that we start really looking at these masks. It's become readily apparent, very apparent, that they're not doing anything. Kids are still getting sick. We just don't believe that there's this risk that the students, that warrants putting our kids in masks every day. On that, so today, down on the ice, if you don't know, I'm the local game warden for the area. I was invited to the ice event and it was excellent to see the kids on the ice without masks on. Why? Because we can finally see their facial expressions. We can see them smile. Can see them, you know, talk to each other. They're, they're finally communicating. Why? Because we can finally see their facial expressions. We can see them smile, can see them, you know, talk to each other. They're, they're finally communicating with each other. Effectively. It, it, it was very nice to see, actually. It got to a point where, you know, kids were coming up to me, we were talking, I could hear them. I could see their expression on their face. Part of my job is reading body language, it's reading emotion, it's reading, you know, their facial expressions, how things. How they are presenting themselves. You know, with, with their face, with their hands, with, you know, their body. I, I can't see that anymore and especially kids when I have to talk to them. But I really think we're doing a disservice at keeping kids in our, in our, in these masks. They're, they're not, they're not learning those lifelong skills. It's just getting to a point, like, we've tried it, it's been two years, we've tried it, we, we've all done it, okay? We, we get it, we understand. It's here, like, it, it's just not going to go away. There's, I don't know what else to say about it. It's, it's getting to a point where, you know, we need to try something else. And I, I just don't think that the masks are the answer at this point. And I, I really think our, our kids and, you know, students and staff, we're all going to be better off. In the future, you know, they're going to be affected by, you know, these skills that they're, that they're not getting. Much longer than they're going to be affected by Omicron, that last two days. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ethan. Anyone else? Anyone else on Zoom? Okay. All right. Are there any additions to the agenda by the superintendent or board members?
So I'd like to add item eight C, which is just to review, the review of the early release days. We have our first one coming up on Friday and I'd just like to fill you guys in on how we're managing it. And let you know what systems we put into place. So I'd just like to review that information with you all.
Okay, we add that to the agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I think Dr. Lebeck has a little bit of celebration she'd like to share with us before we move on. We've heard some of it already.
Yeah, so I don't have anything super surprising, it's just about the ice harvest. So today, the Acadia team took a field trip to the Marana Cook Lake to participate in an ice harvest with volunteers. Throughout our community, but also from the Thompson Ice Harvest, which made it happen. The team has been trying to do this, Dan Holman's been leading this for years, I think. And it's just never worked out and it just, everything kind of fell into place. Very quickly, last week, they reached out to me and I called Jay and checked and see if, to see if we could do it. And they threw this amazing event together. I think it's on channel eight and channel six and then the Kennebec Journal. I have some pictures too that I wanted to pass around to everyone. But for me, what I think is really neat about this is just the integration of curriculum. So their theme for this trimester is nutrition and food science. So what they did today will include a segment on food safety, which is greatly enhanced by refrigeration and the availability of ice. They're going to look at that from a historical perspective as well and how diets have changed over time based on the availability of ice, ice boxes and refrigeration. They'll also be learning about atoms and how atoms and solids are moving at a slower rate than those atoms in liquid or gas form. And next trimester, they're going to continue to work on what they've learned from this experience. With the jobs and career unit that they'll be working on. So again, looking at the history, looking at the different types of jobs and careers that are out there and trying to contact. And work with other universities to, to kind of expand what they're learning. So I just thought that was a super neat experiment or activity that they did all day today. Kids were awesome and I'll just pass around a few pictures and they did get to ice fish too and there's a picture of Carter on here, which is pretty cool with, with his ice fish.
Thank you, Kristen. I also want to thank Dan and his whole team for all the effort that they put into it because it really. It's a lot of work to put something like that together and we really appreciate it. Just seeing the kids down there and seeing how much they were learning. I was talking to some of the kids about what they were learning and it was, it was just so incredible to see them doing such a positive thing. When it's just been so many negative things going on. So it was really, thank you, Kristen, for, for supporting that and for having to do that. Great. So we have the next on the agenda, the reports and meetings.
So just very quickly, I don't know if the board has any questions for any of the principals. Or Mr. Rose is here also and Sarah Morrell is online from the health center. So if there's any questions about anything in the reports, they're, they're certainly able to answer some questions if needed.
Are there any questions? I just wanted to make a comment on the Lou Goldberg event that was happening in Mount Vernon Elementary School. That looked so cool. The kids looked like they were really into that and really enjoying that. So thank you for including that and the pictures in, in the report. That was fun to read.
Yeah, the students, again, were super excited to have that hands-on opportunity or in science and they couldn't wait to have us come down and watch it. And perseverance was definitely the word of the day because oftentimes they didn't work. So they were really thrilled to do that. So thank you.
And if it's okay, I'll just plug, if you have never had a chance to go. One of the unified basketball games, I know Ryan, whoever our special director talked about it in his report. But they have, I think, six or seven games in their season. It is a short season. But it is probably one of the most enjoyable things that you're ever going to see. Just going to plug that they have a three-thirty game. At Marana Cook High School on Monday, if anybody's available. I know I'll be there. So just adding that in because it's real special to see that.
I don't know him, but I thought it was remarkable that someone spent thirty-one years at one school. And I just want to, again, I don't know personally, but I, that caught my eye when I was reading this earlier. So thank you, Mr. Williams, for thirty-one years to our children.
Okay, so we'll move on to our action items.
Do you want to do any committee?
The committee, are there any committee reports before we move on? Curriculum. Have anything to report, facilities? Anything to report from facilities? Policy, we have some first readings coming up. Those are in the packet.
So again, as you're reviewing those policies, please feel free to give feedback to either the policy committee members or forward it on to me. So that we can review it appropriately.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes of January nineteenth?
I move we approve the minutes of January nineteen.
Moved and seconded, there, is there any discussion?
All right, the roll, roll call. Dave, you'll main is first today. Jade? Dane's not, Dane's not here, I'm just double checking online. I know he was, he's still not okay.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
I look, would accept all these wonderful donations.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dave, you're first. Jade?
Yeah.
Tyler?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
Unanimous again, thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Ellen Tracy? We accept the resignation for retirement of Mary Ellen Tracy with regret. Any discussion?
Just a reminder, the, her resignation letter is in your packet, or excuse me, in your folder, I apologize, in your folder. So I haven't had a chance to review it. Will be a big loss at the middle school. Alrighty, Dave Gilmain is first.
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes, with regret.
Melissa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes, with regret and gratitude.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
And David?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation due to retirement of Steve DeAngelis?
Motion to accept the resignation due to retirement of high school teacher Steve DeAngelis. With great memories and thank you very much.
Any discussion?
Um. I don't usually get emotional, but. I got into education because of Mr. D. I was pretty much an A student except for when it came to math, but I absolutely loved physics and he could see I was interested. And we've tried really hard and I fought really hard to get that C in physics because of the math. I even talked today to a coworker who had Mr. D as a teacher. You know, and we both just did that little, he would get so excited, like, can't we tell you guys about this? Before he taught you something. I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
I actually got to, I didn't really notice today, I didn't have a nice teacher, but my daughter's a sixth grade on the cross-country ski team. And he has really caused her to love skiing, like, him cheering her on at the meet here, you would have thought, like, you'll. She talked about that for days, so I hope he sticks around and helps out with that. So I just want to say thank you because she raises every chance she can get now and it makes Dad's life a little busier, but we'll keep going. Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
You know, talk about longevity of a teacher. I'm almost sixty years old and he was my teacher here. And.
He's been here a long time.
Been here all the time and made impact on so many people, made the school what it is.
I think he's been here since the beginning of the, of the Marana Cook Open.
Yes.
He's one of the first teachers here. But we will miss him. He's had a great influence on a lot of people.
He will definitely have a lasting legacy here.
For sure.
And he's, he's done an amazing job with a lot of students. So I think that's evident just by the board alone, so. Right, this is a tough one. Dave Gilmain, you are first.
Great sadness and congratulations on your retirement, yes.
Jade?
With sadness because I can hear from the community, he was a huge part of it. But yeah.
Thank you. Tyler?
Yes, with lots of regret.
Kathy?
Yes, with a lot of gratitude and best wishes in your retirement. You're gonna love it.
Melissa?
Can I say no? Yes, good luck.
Patty?
Yes, congratulations.
Rebecca?
Yes, happy retirement to you.
Betty?
Yes, and I just echo what everyone else has said.
Sean? Yes, and if he's not listening, I hope you can share.
I absolutely will. Kelsey?
Yeah.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
So it is unanimous, although let's just note that some people did want to say no.
He deserves it.
So the next item on the agenda is a legislative update. And I just wanted to let people know that I am now on the Maine School Board Association Board of Directors. As the representative for Kennebec County, so I will be going to all those board meetings. And within that organization, there's a legislative committee that I'm also, I've also joined. So that committee meets once a week. And what we do is we look at all the bills that are coming in front of the education. Mainly the education committee, but it might be something in the labor committee, anything that might involve schools or labor, anything like that. So I just wanted to give you kind of a, a little update on some of the bills that we've been talking about. You may have heard some of these things in, in the news because some of them have been in the news lately. So a lot of the, a lot of the bills that we've been talking about have to do with. Some of the retired teacher funds and things like that. So I'm not going to go into all those details. I just, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that. It does impact us, but it's not that crucial that we know every little detail about what's going on. But there are some that, that do really matter to us. So one of the ones that we talked about this task week is, it's LD nineteen thirty. It's an act to protect school administration officials from harassment and abuse. And what this bill does is that there's already statute in, there's already a law and statute that, that does protect. Public servants from harassment and abuse. And what this bill does is it adds principals, school board members, superintendents, teachers. And persons serving in similar positions to that law. So the bill is in place, not really a new law, it's just adding, it's just some language updates and, and making sure that we don't get abused. So, so that's, that's, and the Maine School Board Association is in support of that. So the other thing that we do is when we talk about these bills, we decide whether or not we want to support them as an association. Or if we want to oppose them as an association. This is one that we definitely wanted to support. And a lot of times it will be, some of the ones that might be a little bit more controversial might need some testimony. From people to go and testify in front of the committee about whether, why we're opposed or why we're in favor of a certain bill coming. So I might be bringing some of those things to you to say, should you like to go testify in front of this committee, so. So I just wanted to let you know that, that's one of them. One of the other ones that, that we talked about this week was LD eighteen seventy-four. Which is an act to clarify COVID paid leave for school employees. So the summary of this is that this bill would amend the law that's already in place. That requires school administrative units to restore up to sixteen leave days used by public school employees affected by COVID. So originally, the law ended in October. And this bill extends it out until employees have used up their fifteen days. So there's really, as long as it's COVID related. So I will tell you that the Maine School Board Association was opposed to this bill. But I voted in favor, so that you all know, I did vote in favor because I think it's a good idea. But they were opposed to it because they wanted, they felt that they wanted more local control. They wanted local school administrative districts to be able to decide whether or not they wanted to have this. In their own schools, districts. So that's why, mostly why they were opposed, not so much that they were opposed to the teachers, get, people getting it, just they wanted more. just they wanted more local control over it rather than have it available. So those are just a couple of things that I thought I'd just bring to your attention, you know, just for information and I'll, I'll keep. And we've only had like a really few bills to look at right now, like maybe four or five at the most. But at the last meeting, they were talking about the ones that are coming up. We'll probably end up with like twenty to twenty-five at every meeting that we go to.
You just wait.
Yeah, that's what they, and this is my first time around in this, so I'm like, oh, these are, this is good. Well, I got two or three, but they're like, well, we might even have thirty the next time. I'm like, whoa, you only have an hour, so anyway. So that wasn't really anything to vote on, I just wanted to give you that information. So if you have, if you're hearing about any of the stuff in the news and you want to talk to me about any of it, I'd really like to hear, you know, what your thoughts and opinions are. Because as a representative of Kennebec County, I'm representing all of the schools in Kennebec County. I mean, it's like, I don't know how many different schools, I didn't count my list, but there's a lot. So, so anyway, and it's been really good to be, hear what other schools are doing and hear what other school boards are facing. And like I said at the beginning of this meeting, we are so fortunate to have the community that we have based on what I'm hearing from some other people in other districts. So again, thank you for this board and for our community. Okay.
Can I ask?
Any, any, any questions or comments, Jade?
Is that something that our teachers are looking for? Has that been asked to anybody?
You mean the COVID?
About the COVID leave, have they been asking for that at all?
So we've been using it, we felt it was just the right thing to do for staff. So even though it wasn't law, we've been supporting our teachers with that going forward. So it's, we've already been in practice with it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, next on the agenda is health and safety procedures and protocols. So I put together, and it's in your packet, the, or excuse me, in your folder, I keep saying that wrong, I apologize, the typical data that I pulled from the Maine CDC, the federal CDC going forward, as well as our individual school data going forward. One of the things that I have removed, just so that you guys know on the back page, or excuse me, the last page, is the staff vaccine information, because obviously there was a court ruling that that won't be mandated. So we're not choosing to report on that anymore at this time. I also wanted you guys to be aware of pool testing across our six schools, how many are participating and what the percentage is in terms of people participating. I did put the student vaccine information in. Again, that's number seven, just so that you would have it. And that's based on state data. And we fall in the sixty to sixty-four range of eligible, all eligible students. So that would be students six through eighteen or, or basically first grade through twelfth grade. So I wanted to put that information in there. You heard Dr. Parker come up and talk about our, our rapid increases in cases through the month of January and going into February here. The kind of positive news is that last week, the number of cases actually kind of cut in half for students and dropped to about a third of what the high was for staff at one point. So I definitely feel like if we keep doing what we're doing, that number will continue to come down. And we'll be able to hopefully some point see able to start having conversations about change. I'm not recommending any major league changes to what we've been practicing, which is following the main CDC and Department of Education standard operating procedure. But I will kind of acknowledge that what Dr. Parker talked about was something that the nurses are really struggling with when it comes to continuous, I'm not sure I'm using the right term, but continuous exposure that happens within the home, but those students are still allowed to come to school. We follow the SLP, but it is something, it has been a cause of concern for us. So I'll just kind of leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions as you're looking through that data. But again, it all comes from Maine CDC, the federal CDC, and then our individual data. I have weekly meetings with the nurses to give me that information, so. Jade?
So I, I wanted to point out a couple of quick things. I know that the numbers are, you know, looking to be trending down. Also, people need to realize not every number is being reported anymore because of how much home testing we're doing. So those home tests don't all get reported to the CDC. So it may look like, you know, these numbers are trending down, but more and more people are testing at home and not getting confirmation. I mean, even at, you know, outside hospitals and stuff, we're not telling people to come in and get that test anymore. So I think that we need to be mindful of that when we're thinking about this as well, is that we don't want a false sense of security either. The other thing that I know that Dr. Parker had brought up was the kids returning to school after being positive. From my understanding, we are requiring them to do a test on day six to be able to return.
Yeah.
Is that, that's correct? Okay, so it is required. So they're supposed to at home test, show a negative antigen test before they can return to school. And if they test positive on day six, it's another five days of quarantine or isolation.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And what we're doing is if it does test negative at home, we follow up with a test at school just to verify that it's negative as well for the students who are returning after being positive. So we just like, just make sure everything tested the way it was supposed to, so. Because it's a little unpredictable, as you know. Is there a motion?
Question. Um, how, how are the rates of Omicron being calculated? Who's deciding, this is Omicron, put it on the stats? Who decides that? And even if they are up, what's so wrong with that? This is, this is nature, this is viral, we've been chasing head colds since the beginning of time, and that seems to be all this is. And I think the school has really started focusing on chasing head colds more than education. I'm very concerned about it. My two cents for right now.
Just so you know, Kelsey, we don't make any kind of determinations of it's, excuse me, Omicron, the Delta variant or something else. We don't do that, all we rely on is whatever the tests show.
Well, I guess that's what I mean, is I know, I know the school doesn't decide these stats, but CDC is off base, they've been off base for a long time. And of course, Mr. Parker, I echo a lot of what you say, and it's okay, it's okay to make up our own minds and not follow the blind leading the blind like we've been all along. And there are serious repercussions happening. And I think it's time that we recognize these filthy face decorations aren't stopping the spread of Omicron. And whether it's a false sense of security and it makes you feel better, we can stay with it. I'm not going there right now, but I think it's time to recognize as a community that not all of these cases are flooding a hospital. And I think the education system should stop being responsible for the incompetency of a hospital. And I don't think we're responsible for a lot of things that put on the plates of these educators. And I think the stress is real and it's time to change. I'm not sure if I want to make a motion or not, and opening discussions here, but.
Babe?
People ask for facts and they say these face decorations aren't working. Months ago, there was a thorough study that tested whether they were making a difference. They researched schools in one of the Carolinas and found that there was a major difference in the infection rates between those that were masked and those that were not masked. You want facts, that was a careful study. We have quoted to us previously a study from a Nordic country that said that masks didn't work. Well, if you read the small print, because I read this study. It says their intent and what they found had nothing to do with whether it stopped me from transmitting to you. It was only studying whether it protected me. So the studies we have do not say that they don't protect. In fact, they say that they do protect. That is a scientific study.
I hear you, okay. So masks aside, let's, let's go beyond masks, fat, immune systems, immune systems need to be exercised. Nature divine tend for us to suck these germs in all day. Pneumonia is real, asthma is real, you name it, we can go on forever. So beyond masks, social emotional health is not being considered, I think, at the appropriate level. We teach social and emotional health as a, as a course in this program. Behind this is a false sense of, I don't know, you're not going to get the head cold, I don't know. I'm not saying any of this right, I'm just so frustrated and I'm ready to move on and I'm ready for a lot of change, like so much change, beyond masks, beyond a lot of things. And protocols and procedures and stress on nurses, stress on educators. And I think we need to really dig deep and get creative. And, and it's okay to try new things. And I suggest we do it. I suggest we. I really like the policy we have now with the optional, optional quarantining. Keeping well kids out of school is the opposite of our keep kids in school centered goal philosophy. That was working against what our philosophy was. So now we're, we're going back there. Now the fact that you get, you get told, you get notified, you, your child is a close contact, you can, you can come or not. As long as no one's symptomatic, no one's testing positive, you're still in the game. Vaccination rates optional and higher than before. We have pool testing available. We have, um, all these other places, I think it's time to ditch this. I think it is. I think that, you know, we're not seeing the forest through the trees. I think it's like, no, that whole thing, it's, it's time, man, it's time, I'm there, I'm there, I'm going to push for it every single time. I would totally radically change a lot of things, but small baby steps. I know that it makes a lot of people uncomfortable because we've been in this so long, we've been doing this so long. Teachers are retiring. Did you read paragraph seven of Mr., his retirement letter? He said it's harder than ever to be an educator at these times. He wrote an entire paragraph about all the things these days and how much needs to change. He's lucky he got out when he did.
So I'm just going to say something about the masks. There is research now that is showing that the cloth masks that we're having our kids wear don't stop the virus. They're saying that we need our kids to wear N ninety-five masks. Well, my feeling about that is that I'm not going to ask parents to go out and buy N ninety-five masks for their kids. But why are we continuing to ask our kids to wear cloth masks when it's been out there in, from the CDC? And there is research that they're not effective.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I have a ninety-five.
Wait a minute, Sean?
I mean, I, I get, I'm at the point where Kelsey is, I mean, change needs to happen. There's a struggle for children in a classroom who can't see their teacher's lips, who are hard of hair. There's a struggle for children to, who have a hard time breathing with masks on. A kid can be in school from eight-thirty, whatever, eight o'clock to two o'clock. If it, it's really, to me, the state and the federal government kicking the can down the road. My kid has been in numerous hockey tournaments with hundreds of kids. And they asked Dad, why do I have to wear a mask all day? Well, it's because that's what we've decided to do as an RSC thirty-eight school board. That's what it comes down to, that's what we've decided to do. Whether it's right or wrong, I honestly don't know, but I think it's time to move on. We're, we're having all these conversations about COVID, what about kids' mental health? There's a study done by USA Today. And I had it up, but I lost it because I was looking for masks. Essentially, the study is, is that young women ages in high school, the suicide rate has gone up over fifty percent, fifty percent. Nobody's talking about that. Nobody's talking about the young man in Brunswick who killed himself because of COVID. That's what he said in the death note, because he wasn't at school. Nobody's talking about that. We're fighting over if a paper mask is okay. We're keeping kids out of school who are perfectly healthy for ten days. Ten days because they, they had COVID, we don't even know when they had COVID. Ten days before this all happened, my kid missed twenty days of school, riding their bike, running up and down the road because they were a close contact, they were a close contact. Their teammates can't play sports because they were a close contact. I mean, we, we don't have, we don't, it's very frustrating to me. It's time to move on. And I make a motion that we allow our kids to not wear masks if they don't want to. And if you're unvaccinated and you're a close contact, you need to show a negative test. And I think that goes both ways. If we want to not have masks, then if you're unvaccinated and you're a close contact, I think you need to show a negative test. That's how I feel and that's the motion I make.
Is somebody on the, go ahead. Is there, wait a minute, hold on, is there a second to the motion? Did you say motion again?
That we remove the mask mandate, but if you're a close contact and you're unvaccinated, then you have to show a negative test.
Is there a second?
If you're a close contact?
Correct. That's where I'm willing to go, no one else has to be, but.
I like what that's going, but I think that's making the policy more strict. Um, isn't it? Doesn't matter vaccination status, if you're a close contact, it's still optional? You don't have to have a negative test?
That's the way it is right now.
Keep it the same, optional masking. May I, can I move to amend your motion? How does this work?
Yes.
No.
There's not a second, that's.
I just, I'm not seeing a lot of vaccinated, unvaccinated, that I just don't think there should be a difference. I think it's, it should be an equal. Because it's a personal.
That's how you can feel, I'm not arguing that, I'm telling you where I'm at.
I appreciate that.
Why we have these discussions.
So we have a motion, but we don't have a second.
How do I motion mine? Stop, Sean. Okay.
I withdraw.
The motion's been withdrawn. Was there somebody online? Tyler? Go ahead.
Um, I agree with the sentiment of Sean and Kelsey about mental health. I just don't know how this looks optically. I think the last time we tried this policy back in September, there was a lot of negative reaction from parents that aren't here at these meetings. And I get, you know, if, if they care, they should be at these meetings, but I just don't want us to sit here and vote on a policy like this and turn around on Monday, realize that we've angered the other half of the community and turn around and have to vote, vote the policy back in. So that's kind of where I'm at. I, I agree with it, you know, I'm, I'm done with the masks, I, I'm in college, I have to wear a mask in every class. You know, it's annoying, it's frustrating, yada, yada, yada. I just don't know how it looks optically and I don't know how the staff would react. So I couldn't support changing the policy.
I hear what you're saying, Tyler, um, and I'd like to speak to that. So my focus is the children and I don't mind upsetting people and discussing further. I think that we are developed human beings, we're all adults, and us wearing a mask is far different than a developing child wearing a mask. And I motion that we make masking optional and maintain the rest of the policy as is.
Question online.
But who's, is it Tyler? Patty?
I.
Oh wait, don't I have to wait for somebody to, is, what, to, if there's a second to what Kelsey just said?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Can someone read what the, what the rest of the motion is? So optional masking, and then what's the rest? So optional masking and then what's the rest of the policy?
It stays the same.
Which includes what?
So basically it's following the, the SOP um, in terms of isolation and or close contacts.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
No, I was just gonna second.
The other one, Patty.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that though I totally respect you, Keltie and Sean and Tyler, everything everybody has said. I would not support this at all because in what I see as, I, I hate masks. I hate wearing them. I hate that children wear them. I hate that everybody wears them. I don't want masks. But I believe the people who are, who, the medical professionals who are telling us that masks are helping it be less bad than if there weren't masks. And I don't feel like anything has changed in my view since the last time we talked about this. Other than all of us feeling more tired of wearing them. I don't feel like the evidence found in research is less strong, even if we know now that cloth masks are less effective than surgical masks and that those are less effective than the K ninety-fives and those are less effective than the N ninety-fives. Did I do that wrong? I think I did that right. Um, I think that the medical professionals and the people who are doing all this research that we talked about and I provide, we all talked about and provided to each other at the start of this school year. That is still, I, I just believe that that is, nothing has changed with that. So I could not stand by um, getting rid of the mask mandate.
Jay?
Oh, I just, one thing that has stuck with me through this entire pandemic, um, I was at a Patriots game outside. Everybody, you know, there's tons of people around and masks, no masks, it was optional, right? And I was sitting next to a lady and, and she had just told me her husband just passed away. He died from COVID, right? And I was like, you know, I'm really sorry for your loss. And her response was, my daughter is the one that's having the hardest time because she brought COVID home and it killed her dad. So there's also the mental health piece that comes with that as well, because now she's having a seriously hard time trying to cope with this because she feels it's her fault, right? So you have kids who potentially bring it home and they infect a parent, they infect a grandparent and that person potentially dies. We don't know who's gonna have a mild case. We don't know who's gonna have barely any symptoms at all. It just went through my family personally and I definitely, you know, was struggling to breathe. I had a hard time. My lungs still haven't recovered and I'm, you know, three weeks out from it. I'm, I'm still struggling and I'm a pretty healthy person for the most part. I know I'm drinking an energy drink right now because I'm so tired and I just got done with basketball practice, but I just, I think, you know, it's hard to say who's gonna get really sick and I think, you know, I'm tired of the masks too. I go to work right now and I'm wearing them and I'm seeing patients in them and, and it's hard, especially, you know, working with elderly. They have a hard time hearing me at times, but at the same time, if there's a chance, if there's one small chance we're protecting somebody or we're protecting our kids, I think that it's worth every frickin' step that we take. And I just think that right now where we're in the cold season, summer months come, like things start to warm up, viruses start to be killed off a little bit more. We might see those numbers drop down more. I don't think right now is the time to pull masks off of kids and run this as our own personal experiment. That's not what we're in the business of doing. We're here as a school board to protect our children. And I think from the very beginning through now, most of our parents want our kids to be wearing a mask. And I, I definitely agree with them at this point. As, as time goes on, maybe parents will start to feel more comfortable. And I think at some point, yeah, they do have to come off. I just don't think that right now, the way our cases are, that it really is the best time to make this decision.
So I, I, I'm just gonna make one point is that our cases are high right now and all of our kids are wearing masks.
And are we seeing a transmission in school? From my understanding, we aren't. From what I've been told this entire time is the transmission is not in school, it's in the communities where kids are not wearing masks.
So then we can't, then why do it here? That's my point is, we're all a melting pot of people here, there and everywhere. So why put it here where so much development is happening? I feel like it is just um, not effective. It is detrimental.
Betty?
I don't have any scientific data. I do know that I rode in a truck for over an hour with two other ladies. We were all masked. The next day, one of those ladies tested positive for COVID. Neither Anita nor I came down with COVID. My husband works at a hospital where they mask. He was a close exposure to both of the other ladies who work in his office. Again, they are masked. He has not tested, he has not gotten COVID. This is all anecdotal, I know. I can't, I'm not pointing to, to what, what has happened to me and to my husband. Masks, I can't be convinced that masks do not work.
I remember you sharing that story, Betty, and it could be true and none of us could confirm or deny that it did or didn't stop the virus from getting to you. But what I'm getting at further than the, the word is optional. If you, you want that to be a personal therapy and you feel like it is protecting you, your children, whoever, there should be a choice. But those who are seriously feeling like it's not working, it's not worth it, should also have the choice to let their kids be fully developmental within that social, emotional and everything else in between. Bacterial, as you name it, medicinal side of it all in, and they should have that option. Um, I'm just not seeing, so to your point, Kathy, all time high of Omicron cases. So what is so bad about having Omicron? Have we decided that this is the death of us? Are we chasing head colds? Are we willing to sacrifice all the things I listed about why we don't want masks for Omicron, which is seeming, seemingly very mild, good for your immune system to be exercised such as these little kids who need these things. I believe in mother nature. I believe in our immune system. And I believe in developing, what I'm, I studied social behavioral sciences in college. That was my degree. And I believe so heavily on how important it is to read facial expressions in children especially. That's why a nursing mother looks at her baby. These are the little kids, these aren't adults. Um, we're not talking about adults who can slap a mask on and get through a meeting. This doesn't bother me. I don't care. I'm talking about the children. And if we, if we keep sweeping them under the rug, I have a feeling we're going to see serious repercussions in non-empathetic adults as our next generation. I don't understand why this is the answer. Vaccination is a personal therapy. Vitamin B should be required to be offered at lunchtime in schools. We don't get enough vitamin D, I meant vitamin D in the winter seasons. We're all cooped up from sunup to sundown. We don't get out there on the ice like they did today. I love that so much that they were out there soaking it up. Why aren't we supporting, Mr. Parker? I, I love it when you speak about vitamin D. And I think we should be supplementing um, our bodies to fight Omicron instead of just these. That's it. That's where I'm getting at, guys.
I, I don't think we've heard from you yet. Okay, Tyler?
I, I, I just, I can't get over the fact that we, we tried this in September. We lifted the mask mandate and it was, it was a mess. And, you know, we talked about what the kids want. We had multiple students come to us after we said we were gonna lift the mask there and saying, no, we don't wanna do this. You know, I, I wasn't able to be, speak at the, the board meeting where we put the mask mandate back on, but I sat through that whole two-hour Zoom meeting and ninety percent of the people that spoke at that meeting were for masks. I think if we change this policy now, it A makes the district look bad. It makes our budgeting process harder because we're gonna anger a lot of people in the community. And I just, if it was June and, you know, cases were low and vaccination rates had higher, I, I'd vote for this policy. I, 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 I just, I don't, we're in the middle of winter. Cases are at record highs. Yes, they're coming down, but I, I, I just, I can't, I can't vote to change the policy.
Oh, Dane?
I would just bring up um, from Tyler's point that he just mentioned. When we made this, the um, the decision back in September, there was uh, we were unaware of the limiting um, abilities they were gonna have to keep children in school and what was needed to keep them in school. And one of those things was, was the uh, the mask mandate that came right from the CDC. That's, that was one of the things that was on the table. And we said back then, when pool testing is available, and we have other mitigations that we were gonna re, look at this. We have now had uh, vaccines available to his children. If parents wanted to give their children vaccines, they have done that. If parents wanted to enroll their kids into pool testing, they have done that. The only thing that has not been an option is the masking. The CDC just conceded that the masks that our children are wearing every day in school are not as effective as the N ninety-five. And I'm pretty sure most Americans already knew this. N ninety-fives are also, I don't believe, I'm not sure, are made for, uh, I don't think there's children sizes, I'm not sure. Regardless of that, there's now these mitigations uh, available to people. So I'm, and since we're all giving war stories, my wife and I both had COVID, two different variants. We have three kids. They were tested all the time in our house and they never once caught COVID from us. So, there's my story.
David?
If, if there's measles going around, people are either asked to stay away from school if they have it or if they're exposed to it. If there's lice, it's very seriously addressed and major measures are taken to keep a child with lice away from contact with the other children. If there's a tick infestation in the woods where I'm hunting or hiking, I either address my clothing or even if it's a bother or put on protective chemicals, which is also something I don't like, but I may do. Um, because I don't want to take the chance. I may, I've had tick bites and I haven't gotten Lyme disease, but, that I know of. Uh, but it's a protective measure to try and do those things. We're doing protective measures that may not be doing the cloth masks that I also wear may not be doing as well as the others, but they did not say they're not effective. They're just not as effective as. And sure, I could wear steel clothing when I go in the woods when there's ticks or I could totally stay away from work or school if someone there has lice or bedpots or whatever. So I'm not doing that. So we do want to adjust measures as much as we can when we can. But should we give up a protective measure that protects the children? That most of them have done much better with the masks than we adults. We fuss and fume on both sides of the issue. And they go on with their life. And yes, it's harder for some of them and it's harder for some of us adults. But the feedback from the schools is that the kids are working around it for the most part.
So um, I just wanna add to this because I would be remiss if I didn't add to this conversation. Um, and I'm, I'm uncomfortable having to say it like this, but I'm gonna be very blunt at this point. Um, we've had up to five people leave this district in the last six months. And a lot of it had to do with the stress of managing teaching and or being an administrator with all of everything that's going on around COVID. I'm being very honest when I say if we make masking optional, and I just wanna put it out there, and again, I'm not trying to hold anyone hostage, we are going to lose teachers. I just wanna be very clear about that, okay? I want, I don't want anyone to go in and say, well, oh wait, you didn't tell me this. I can think of six teachers sitting here right now that are gonna be on my phone tomorrow morning and they are going to be telling me what's gonna happen of what they're gonna do. And I, and again, I'm not, I, I mean, people gotta make their own decisions and I'm sitting here telling everybody on the board, whatever the decision is, I'm gonna work to support it and make sure it happens. But life is about to get a lot tougher if we have optional masking. I'm just being honest and I'm not gonna throw out names or anything like that, but I have to be honest and let you guys know there may be unintended consequences of this. Um, and I, I, I totally hear what everybody is saying. And I'm just putting that piece on the table as an important piece of your decision-making process.
David?
Yeah, you know, I could say something here. I can't stand these things either. Hate it. I, I'll go out bars and stuff and I go to restaurants and I won't wear it. Nobody else is. And I know nobody's catching it, but unfortunately, um, I have to listen to my constituents and most of them want this. That's why they put me on the board. Um, and I see the end of the tunnel. Yes, come in the spring. I really do. Omicron is dying out. You know, I see less and less now in the hospitals and I know there is a light at the end of the tunnel coming and we're gonna see it probably sooner than later. But that being said, I wouldn't mind, again, like September is getting the public, I wanna hear more from the parents whose kids come here. There's a lot maybe have changed their minds since then. And I wanna hear what theirs is to help me make that decision. Um, and again, like I said, this sucks. Yeah, I'll say it. But I think just for a little while longer, I, and listening to Jay, I know, I've heard a couple of teachers say that it's it would probably make some harsh decisions and without teachers, there's gonna be no place for kids to come to anyway. But I really do think there's the end of the, end of the tunnels coming and uh, for a little while longer, they will keep the status quo.
Eddie and then?
We are, we at the school board are here to protect all students, including the most vulnerable. And um, if there's anything that we can do to protect a child, then I am for it.
Patty?
I just wanted to say that when Jay just gave that information to us, it made me think back to in September when we talked about this and talked about our nurses. And I, I don't, I don't, I haven't talked to our nurses in a lot, little while. Um, but I, um, I, I think if we make masking optional, we may um, we certainly are blowing off their recommendation. And that's not gonna make them feel good in this situation where they're already tapped to the max. So um, I just wanted to say that too. And when we talked about it in September, that was a big reason for me wanting to have universal masking was because our, our nurses, our medical people who we say at all of these board meetings that we trust and believe are doing right by our kids and so we want to support them. Um, they're, they have said that they. Support the masking, so I just wanted to say that.
Was it Tyler? Or Rebecca, sorry?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Jay, for saying that because I was going to ask you that question. Personally, I really do want to get rid of the masks, but given what I was listening to Jade say about it being cold and flu season. That was a good point, and. You know, I'd like to remind everyone of our goal that we want to retain good teachers, and if this is going to push a lot of teachers out, I don't think that would be a good step. Towards honoring that goal. So I guess in the end, I'm not going to support this motion.
So. I just have a, I have a quick question. So if we. And I'm just, I'm asking out of curiosity because I don't know, like, not much has been talked about about this. Um, if we do optional masking, there's going to be a lot more quarantines. Am I wrong in saying that? If you switch to optional masking as a school. That changes. That changes what we, am I, I just, I can't pull it up loud enough, so I'm just asking if anybody has it handy that we can. Look at that because from my understanding. If you're doing optional masking, it opens up for a lot more quarantines again.
Dane's always so quick with that.
Yeah, I know. I'm like, I'm trying to, that's why I asked you guys if you guys had that handy. Thanks, Dane.
Yeah, you, yes, you are absolutely correct. You basically tear off a layer, um. Uh, you tear off a Band-Aid, if you will. Um, which it does open you up for more quarantines, yes, and that was the whole reasoning or the whole purpose behind this was the tiered layer of protection. Um, you know, was, that was first school mask mandates, then it was, um, the pool testing came out, and then it was vaccinations. Um, but yes, with the mask mandate gone. The parents would essentially either, in order to alleviate being quarantined, or their children to be quarantined, would have to be entered into pool testing. Or had been vaccinated, or had COVID within the past 90 days.
So then we're looking at more kids out of school again for longer periods of time, and we are going to contact trace every single one of these back. Because if a kid comes to school positive. Then we're going to have to do all of that contact tracing, and I can tell you if we're optional masking, we're not going to have nurses to do so, so then we're going to be remote anyway. So I, I think that you guys really need to consider that when thinking about this because our goal is to keep them in school and keep them in school safely. And we've done this as a board to keep the kids in school. So if we remove that layer, all of the kids that are not vaccinated, which there's still a significant number to include most of our preschool kids who can't get it. Our kindergarteners who can't get it yet. So we need to be keeping that in mind as well, and while people may not agree with it, this is how we keep our kids in school, and as a school board, that was our whole purpose, right? That was why most of us got behind it. Is because we wanted to keep our kids in school. And if this is how we keep our kids in school, this is how we keep our kids in school. And we've all agreed that we need to keep them in school. We've had too much time out, and we're finally at a point that more kids are back in school, and there's less quarantines. So that.
So let's stop following the CDC policy. That's Jay's favorite. Except when I suggest that. So, um, the CDC has now set up this, this. Conundrum. Why are we staying in the conundrum? So I look at these cases as victories. These cases don't equal death. These cases equal your immunity. It's going to drop back off. We all got the head cold. No, okay? I don't need to downplay it, but the numbers show we're do, we're overshooting our target. We're doing too much for this. So what I'm saying is, is I see these as victories. I see every time a kid or a teacher gets it, you've got it over with. Check it off the list. You're moving on with your life. Let's all move on with our life. That's great. No one's praising that. It's okay to get it, get over it, and move on with our lives, and this is happening. This is great. I can't wait. Until it's gone through and, and gone away, and I know we're there. So it's not a matter of if we get it, it's a matter of when you get it. So maybe the idea is slow the roll, right? So I don't know how many with Omicron are ending up in a hospital. We really, are we really flooding the hospital with this? Is this still our goal is flatten the curve? I think, um, I think that we're not putting our focus on the right fight. That's my concern. We're not focused.
So are we, are we ready to take a vote on this?
Thank you for having a discussion, guys. I know I came in like a wrecking ball tonight.
Donna, can you read the motion, please? The one from like an hour ago. Okay, I, I think it was, uh, Kelsey, you, did you make them? Okay.
So. Kelsey made a motion that we make masking optional and maintain the rest of the policy as is. So I was looking at the sample motion to try to work those two together because I'm assuming that's what you meant. So if we go with, um, motion to make masking optional. And remain in, and. And remain in line with the remainder of the main department of education standard operation procedures.
Yeah.
Through the month of February. And be reviewed again in March. I was just gonna do something like that with that. Is that Kelsey, does that?
Say what you want.
I have to think about this.
I don't know. I'm going to go on, John. Okay.
There's been a few things I just want to, we, we keep hearing, oh, the end's almost in sight. Well, I've heard that for a long time. If you just get your kid vaccinated, well, I got both of my kids vaccinated, probably against my better judgment, to be honest. I don't know. I, I don't feel right about it, but we did it because the end's going to be in sight. Because they're sick and tired of not being able to go to school. They're sick and tired of not being able to play sports. They're sick and tired of not being able, we have a lovely vacation for hockey. We go to Canada. They're tired of it. The end's almost in sight. Well, I don't see the end almost in sight. My daughter sent me an email today from school with her friends, and I wasn't going to read it, but I'm going to. Hey Dad, next school board meeting, bring up how we have lost out on a lot of things at school, such as ban, such as field trips. We should be able to do that. Mr. A is telling us about how it used to be and how, what kids used to be able to do. It makes me and my friends very sad. How most likely we can't do these things and are not going to be able to do these things. Make sure you can help us. I love you. Annalise. Enough is enough. They did their part. The kids have done their part. If parents don't want to vaccinate their kids, that's not my fault. Why should my son, who has a hard time in school, have to wear a mask? He can't see his teacher's lips. The teacher has a hard time understanding him because parents are not choosing to do things. I made that choice for my child. There's other options for children's education. Enough is enough, and we want to, I'll say what I have to say for another agenda. I'll start there. We want to talk about teacher morale. I'll go down that road tonight.
So are we ready to vote on the motion on the floor? Does everyone understand what it is? So it's to make masks optional and follow the rest, the remainder of the, is that, Kelsey, is that?
Yeah, policy as is. But also making that optional, but I'm trying to think of how that works. With the quarantine bit. Because I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot either.
I don't think it's going to work if you, with that. Motion like that.
So we won't be able to do the optional.
When, what, once you say optional masking, the. You, you basically lose that layer of protection, and another layer is when you do Band-Aid masking, you have the test to stay. So if the school mandates masking, you can test to stay in school. Um, and if you don't, if you do optional masking, obviously, you lose that.
What's your, what's your pleasure?
Motion to stop following CDC's guidelines. Well, that's a different.
Yeah, that's totally different. I'm sorry.
I know. I'm just being silly.
Ah, so Kelsey, if you just, if you, if your concern right now is just to make max masks optional, is, would you want to just have that be the motion? And then we could take the rest of it in a different motion? Or do we just?
No, because I don't, I don't want to go back to the 10-day quarantine for everybody, no matter what, if you're in close contact. That was the worst, right? That was awful.
I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe you go back to that.
Well, go on.
It's five days.
Oh, right. Okay, but still, five days for a welcome to be at school is five days of a parent out of work, and that's awful. And I hate that this is the conundrum, um.
Right, and then it's 20 days of nurses still contact tracing.
If you have optional masking, you have to go out in five days, no matter what.
Just go back to parents have a right to put their children in pool testing. If they're choosing not to, it's not my kids' fault.
Optional masking, and if you're in pool testing. You're negative, so you can stay in school. You don't have to quarantine, right, Dane? So the caveat is, if we go to optional masking, please, everybody, enter pool testing. That's your, that's your way to stay in school.
Right. If you pool test, then you're going to start. That's, you, you can see through the, you can read between the lines there. Numbers are just going to skyrocket.
The pool testing numbers?
Of course.
Yeah.
Tyler, go ahead.
Uh, can I just make another motion? Is that, and that, is that in order?
There's a motion on the floor, so we, we might as well just vote on it, and if, if no one's comfortable with it, let's just vote it down, and then we can, you can make your motion at that point.
That's fine.
That's on the floor.
My weighted vote, so I'm like, just a little slower. Okay, I'm ready.
The rest of the board, is the rest of the board ready for this to vote? Okay. Okay, so Dave Gilman, you're starting us off.
Yeah, fortunately at this point, I say no.
Jay?
No.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
No.
Kathy?
Yes. Just a minute.
Melissa?
Which one are we voting on? Optional masking. Keep the policy the same, which means.
And continue, it's basically optional masking, but continue to follow the SLP from the state around quarantining and isolating.
I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.
Kids can enter pool testing and stay in school because they'll be proven.
I just want kids to be in school.
You can abstain, or we can come back to you.
Because I, 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 every time somebody speaks, I agree with them, so I don't. So I abstained.
Patty?
No.
Rebecca?
No.
Betty?
No.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
And David Twitchell?
No.
So Donna, correct me if I'm wrong. I've got one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Yeses. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven nos, and one abstention.
The nos are 546.83, and the yeses are 304.33.
So the motion does not pass. So the motion did not pass. Is there another motion on the floor?
Motion to keep policies the same.
Wait a minute, who said, can I keep, can I make a motion?
I did, but it's the same motion, so I'll second his motion.
Okay, Jade seconded your motion, Tyler.
So, I'm sorry, what, what?
Say it again, Tyler, please.
Motion to keep the policy the same.
And I second that motion.
Any more discussion? No, we're ready to vote. Okay, so David Gilman, you're up again.
Keep it the same, yes.
Jay?
Yeah.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Kathy?
No.
Melissa?
When do we vote on it again?
So we're voting on keeping everything the same.
March.
Yes. Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
No.
Kelsey?
No.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
So I've got three no, and I counted right, eight yes. So motion carries. Okay. Moving on. The next three items on the agenda are discussion items, and. 8A is about nutrition and dietary health, and the reason that that's on the agenda is because.
Actually, um.
Did I skip something?
No, actually, uh, Dane is the one that asked about some of the school lunchtime. Um, so if it's okay, Kathy, what, I did speak to Jen Hall, who's our nutrition director, and I'd like to invite anybody that has questions about. School lunch and how that all works, um, to forward me their questions, and I'm going to get answers from Jen specifically around that. Um, for example, I'm going to use something Kathy sent me about Farm to School. Um, we actually do participate with Farm to School initiatives. Um, we've been doing that for several years in the district. Um, and we're kind of on their list, but like, you guys may not even know that. So like, I was thinking, and when I was talking with Jen, um, she was talking about she has nutritional guidelines that she must need. In order to get reimbursed for meals from the state, but again, I'm going to be very honest in saying, I don't even know what those nutritional guidelines are. I depend on her to do that. So any questions you have around that, I would love to hear them so that I can bring answers back to you. Because I kind of don't know exactly what you guys are looking for at this point. Um, and I, I just want to make sure you're getting the information you need. I didn't want to invite Jen. Um, in and her not kind of be prepared for what the questions are. So what I'm looking for is feedback on questions so we can kind of put that together for you. So even if you can't think of something sitting here right now, please feel free to send me an email, and I absolutely will get you those, those, uh, answers to those questions around. Nutrition and school lunch in the district, and I see Sean.
Yeah, how do they determine what a nutritional meal is? I mean, I'm not, some of those meals, I look at the lunch menu, I'm like. Okay, I know they have to follow nutritional guidelines. My kids love them a lot sometimes, but I'm kind of wondering.
So I think another piece of this is really thinking about nutrition and how important it is for our healthy body and for our immune system. So as Jay and I were talking about this and just wondering, I mean, we, we don't have to spend time on this if this isn't something that this board wants to do. I mean, a couple of people have talked to me about it, so I thought I would just bring it up to everybody. Um, because I think it's important for us to have the information about what does our school lunch, for what, what nutrition are, are we? Um, are we sourcing local, are we using local sources? Where, where are we getting our food from? What is our food? And the other piece of it for me is what's our health curriculum look like? How does our health curriculum address nutrition, immunity, and how to keep your body really safe? And I think the reason that I thought we might want to discuss this is because some of the things that John Cocker has been telling us about, I think are really worth looking into. And thinking about, um, as far as curriculum and nutrition, and is that going to have a budgetary implication? So that was really where, kind of where I was coming from, but I just wanted to kind of get a sense from the board before we just move on and. Either not, I mean, at this point, or yes, we want to take a look at it. So what's, it's a pleasure.
I like the idea of hearing about it, learning about it more, and thinking about it. I, uh. You know, there, for the details, it's very important. Uh, so if. The team that. the team that handles these different things could report to us, just as you and Jay were describing, that would be great.
And again, it would be important for them to know what we want to know. Sean, and then somebody?
No, I'm good. I just agree with what he said.
Okay. Dane?
My, 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 my basic concern was I just, I wanted to get a, a boots-on-the-ground picture of what basically is being served at our lunches. That's, I wanted to start there, like, is it a full salad bar? Do they get like a slice of an apple, a piece of a lettuce? That's, that's, I wanted to see. And then I would totally be interested in working off of that, but that's not what I'm hearing they're getting. That's why I've been bringing this up.
So is this something that we do want to proceed with and, and, and look at? Okay, so if you have questions.
Because it is, it's recommended by the CDC.
So if you have specific questions, it would be really helpful to send them to Jay, so that he, so that they can prepare for a presentation or for information that we want, okay?
So if it's okay, I'm just gonna review real quick, because I just want to make sure I'm doing. So the question Sean asked, like, what's the definition of a nutritional meal? How is it all planned? I think that's a great question to bring forward. Also, kind of what is included in our health curriculum at this point? And then I like what Jane said, like, what, can we have some pictures of what does it look like across the school? Are there salad, what does the salad bar actually look like? You know, that kind of stuff. So I feel like that's a great place to start, and that definitely gives me a direction.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
I really like the idea of getting a snapshot, because I haven't seen a school lunch menu in twenty-five years. So I, I really have no clue. You know, is ketchup still a vegetable? Like, is that, what are the standards? I had no idea.
And this is why we, Jay and I were talking about it, because, I mean, I felt the same way. I mean, I was here for, you know, all the years that I was here, and I saw the lunches, but I really don't know now what, what, you know, what is, what is offered, and where are we getting our food from? So, but we'll, we'll move forward with that. Thank you, Jay. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, um, next on the agenda, agenda is an idea that Kelty brought to me, and I wanted to, before we moved on that, I wanted to bring it to the whole board, and it kind of goes back to the discussion that we were just having. And I'm gonna let you, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Talk about what you and I talked about.
Sure, Kathy. Um, well, you know, as, as a board, we sit here and we, we talk about making a lot of decisions that affect a lot of people. And we just wait for somebody to stand up and speak, and so this is speaking to the administrators, the staff, and everybody of the like is, I suggested, why, why haven't we done a survey? And I know that surveys are a lot to ask for, actually, but I wondered if, if maybe you weren't feeling like we'd even offered it, if that's upsetting to you. I mean, feel free to always send anonymous input to whoever needs it, so it gets to the board. Because I feel like, just like we, we just had an example where started talking, and then it's brought to the attention that people might leave based on that. And the last thing we want is for this entire institution to crumble. And that's really important. So kind of before making big, heavy decisions, it's really nice to know where everybody stands. Don't be silent. I guess what I'm saying is, use your voice, and if, if that means a survey sent to you, which takes a lot of work to get sent, managed, and digested, it is a lot, but I didn't want you to feel like you weren't being invited to somehow get your heart out. And why, and what, because I just, I like knowing where everybody stands all the time, because it's super important, and everybody's, everybody matters. And so if it wasn't a survey, if there were some other ideas on how to get everybody's two cents in, more valuable than two cents, but it, I think it's really important, especially important. I just think it's an interesting dynamic that we sit here not knowing how you feel about any of the things we're discussing and voting on. I don't know how, what the temperature of each school's administration is on how they feel about certain policies, and I wish I did. So I didn't know what that looked like, so the survey came to mind as one mechanism, but perhaps it's just saying, please always send your opinion. And if, you know, don't ever be quiet. That goes for everybody. Never stand quiet. You always wish, you know, you just said something most of the time. It's good to open discussion, too. You, you can be anonymous, you don't have to be. But where you stand is respected, and I think it's really important. So I don't know if it looks like a survey or not. But, um.
Just wondering if anyone else has any thoughts or ideas about how to get information from people as we're making the decisions that we're making?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Patty? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Patty.
Oh, okay, sorry. I couldn't see you, Sean, sorry. I just couldn't tell. Kelty, were you talking about a survey for administrators, or not necessarily just for administrators, but for every, all, everybody, all stakeholders and?
Everybody on planet Earth right now.
Well. I just, because I can't see, like, when you're looking and saying you, like, I can't tell if you're looking at administrators, or?
New world problem. Sure, it was, it's to our, our little folks over here on the corner that are the administrators. That's exactly it, Patty. So just in regard to retention, really.
Okay.
Keep that at heart. You know, like what I just did, if that's gonna send ten people out the door, that's pretty important to weigh in on.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, you said, sorry, I wasn't in, or I'm sorry, I had to take a call. Yeah, but, um, you were talking about surveys for teachers, I'm assuming?
Well.
Anybody?
I think survey, I mean, I think, I don't know if you were specifying teachers or administrators, but, I mean, I, I feel like we need to hear more from parents' voice, too, and I think we need all members of our.
Because, as you know, we all get emails from people, and that's why I sit here. That's, like you said, Dave, that's why we're here, and that's where we are, where we are, because the people talking to me drive me to, get supported behind these ideas, and I, I think that we kind of get a feel for parents who take the initiative to write in and thoroughly express themselves. But once upon a time, oh my God, two, two years ago now, a survey monkey was sent around, and I thought, this is so cool, they care about what I think, right down to bus, do you have care, or don't you have care, if you have to go remote? I thought, this is so considerate. And it went to everybody in every community. You had a giant Zoom with like four thousand people on it. I just thought that was wonderful, but that survey monkey seemed really cool, but this was, I thought, more small scale, but I would love to also get that out to parents or students. Students, um, students, teachers, staff, administration, parents, the whole, everybody in the world, if you could just weigh in. But are surveys effective? I mean, do people do surveys? Like, we talked about that. Do the teachers feel like their voices are being heard at all? Is this, is this a problem? Awesome. Do you feel like a survey would be, or some mechanism to get people to participate in offering their opinions and thoughts on everything? I agree.
And I think there's a lot of strong opinions, both sides of any subject.
I agree.
And when you have a open forum, given that the strong opinions, people who are willing to do it, and it always involves fifty different. You just do that small sample, but then if you take a big picture.
I appreciate you, Brent. And, and you, you're welcome to contact any of us at any time, too, because we really are looking for information from people. We need, we need information. That's why we're here.
I think a survey, I mean, I was actually just talking about, I think it's our, you know, to put tools out there, let people know we want to hear from them. If only a hundred people respond, that's their prerogative. I mean, but I think it's our job, if we don't ask through a survey, or send in written to a suggestion box, or, you know, send out through politics, spend a lot of money on surveys every day. Just did one for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, asking people's opinions. And it's people's choices if they respond, but if you don't offer it, then they feel left out, right? So I feel we need to offer it to everybody, and again, the louder voices always win. And, you know, the louder people who are willing to come out, you know, people like, well, why didn't you say something? Not everyone's felt like people on this board who are willing to put their opinions out there. And I think we need to hear from those folks. I think we start, are starting to a little bit. But I think if we put out a survey or suggestion box, and we can all blast it out, we all have contacts, parent groups. You know, I have a lot of parents who, with my kids, they reach out to me about things, and I'd strongly encourage them. I, I try to encourage them. Teachers who reach out to me, I try to encourage them to come here, but they're nervous about their job and promotion, so. I think it's, any way we can get information, we should be gathering it.
If you guys want me to adjust the time a minute, I will absolutely make it happen.
Well, Jay, that's the other thing, yeah. But one more thing on your plate is not, um.
Well, I think, I think we could do, I mean, I, I don't think that, I don't really want to, to be honest with you, I don't really want to ask you to do that, because it is, it's a big thing to put a survey together that gets you the information that.
And I'm happy to work on it.
But I was gonna say, if there are people that want to work on it. Patty, did you have, was Patty?
I was just gonna say, I'd, I'd love to work on it, too, but my hand was not up.
Sorry, it's Dane. Dane said he wanted to work on it.
Yes, Patty, you must wait your turn.
I'll wait.
Go ahead, Dane.
Just kidding. I didn't, I missed the beginning of this. I couldn't hear. Was it a survey for everything, like in RSG thirty-eight? In the world, in our world, or is it, was it just for COVID nineteen? I couldn't hear it.
It's just about corn dogs.
Oh, yeah, I want to hear it.
I don't think we really specified that, and I think, I think that's what we would need to do, if we could get a small group together to work on a survey, I think we wish.
Should we make a subcommittee?
True. Do we want to make a subcommittee?
Survey subcommittee, if anybody wants to do it together at one time?
Surveys can be as complicated or as simple as you make them. In some cases, we may just want to do a, a really quick survey with one or two questions on it, and people respond. Or, or you could do a survey with thirty questions, but that's harder to interpret. And, and it's not as timely necessarily as a one or two question survey.
I, I guess for me, what, what I would want to know before we did any of this is, what are we looking for in outcome? What are we, what are we gonna do with the information that we get? Because, you know, I don't want to just put all this time in and ask people to do it, but then what are we gonna do with the information? John?
Well, generally, when you look at a survey, if you see a cert, if you really want, I guess you gotta be committed to using it. It's like any polling or any surveys we do. I always tell my bosses, if you're not gonna use it, let's not do it. If you want to go with your gut or what you think.
Right.
Then don't do it. But if people would be committed, I'd be willing to put the time.
Diane? Who was over there? Tyler?
I, I, I'm not opposed to doing a survey, and I think, I think the data would be good. I just, I feel like the people that are most passionate on an issue, so we put out a survey on, I'm just gonna use COVID restrictions, because that's what we just talked about. The people that are most passionate on either side of that are gonna be the ones to speak on it. And what we're going to get is, we're gonna get the most polarized view from one side or the other, or both. So I just, I don't know how effective it's going to be in assessing what the community in its totality wants, just the people that are most vocal on the issue. And I mean, that's a problem with polling in general. I just, I think the data would be interesting to look at. I'm just not sure how much we should use it in weighing our policy decisions.
Anyone else?
I think you're right, Tyler, that we need to be careful. I think it can be very helpful, especially to be a little more, it's nice to get the whole thing, but that probably would take a whole research team to analyze, and even then it would be doubtful. Listening to what people say and having a survey, I think, would be helpful. And we just have to be very careful, the team that comes up with it, be very careful how things are worded, because I'm so used to surveys that I practically laugh at the questions, because they're carefully framed to make it so that I'm gonna answer one way. Well, I won't, but that's, I'm a stinker about it. So I think it can be done, and I think it could be helpful. But it might, we don't take it for the law, what the survey comes up with, but we certainly can and take it into account.
Thank you. So, Dane, we want to volunteer to work on this?
Yes.
Dane?
No, I do not want to volunteer, sorry. I don't have time.
Patty?
No, sorry.
Dane, did you want to say something?
I, no, I was just gonna say that I agree with Tyler and David, that, what they said.
Okay. Patty?
I do want to volunteer, and I also, I also wonder if really what we're saying, because it sounded like, and I totally agree, Kelty, what you were saying at the very beginning of this conversation about the survey was really, we just need to have a way to have our fingers on the pulse of what people think about everything. So maybe it's not really a committee to write a survey, because we don't really know what we're writing it about, but really, it's a committee to just put some time and energy to think about how that, how we can take that pulse, and maybe it's a bunch of different things. Or maybe it's like, sometimes a survey and sometimes something else, or maybe it's a way of thinking about our system, our district, and if there are systemic problems that keep people from feeling comfortable with talking. Like, if teachers don't feel like they can come to school board meetings, that's a problem, you know? So like, yes, I will volunteer to do whatever, but I wonder if that whatever is bigger than a survey.
I think it, that could be determined by the, the committee that formed, and I, you're probably right, Patty, it's a bigger than just a survey.
Yep.
Did you want to be, give me the, Kelty, or you?
Yeah. I was just looking at some times, I mean, I don't think it would take us more than one little session to kind of see how you want to go about this. I mean, we say survey, maybe we could just offer, you know, a couple of questions, something like.
So I've got Kelty, Sean, and Patty.
I'd also like to be on the committee. It's Tyler.
Tyler, was that Tyler?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you guys, if you four could just figure out a time to get together and, and work on that, would that be, would that be acceptable to everyone? And Jay should be on that committee.
So if it's convenient, I could have Donna. That way, people aren't trying to do it in the middle of the moment.
Great, thank you, Jay.
We might bring that back to the committee, and if we have any recommendations, we can kind of.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before it goes over. Absolutely. Patty, Kelty, Sean, and Tyler.
Kathy, this is Dane.
Dane?
Come on, Dane.
Sorry, I wish I could, but, um, no, Kathy, I was, I didn't want to put more burden on the school board, but I think there is a communication link that's open, and that's our email addresses on, on the school board. And I, we, I do hear from a lot of them, from parents. But I think if we get that back out there, that, that's what it's there for, you're supposed, you know, to reach out. That's an open dialogue with us, that if you have a problem or concern, that's the email, and not to sit around and wait. So I don't know if we can get that out somehow, that, at least I am. I'll, I'll answer your back. If that makes sense.
Make sure that we get it back out to everybody before.
Makes perfect sense.
Yes, that makes sense. Okay, next item for discussion, the early, early release day review. So I'm gonna turn that over to Jay.
So I just want to let the board kind of know where we landed with this. So all of the new early, we tried to make a clear distinction between.
Um, so all of the new early, we tried to make a clear distinction between the early, the newly added in early release days and the formally previously scheduled that were part of our calendar. So the early release days that are new, we're, um, asking principals to do. Well, I say to do, they're kind of planning this with their staff as part of the discussion they're going to have. Is making sure that there's some SCL work with the teachers. And then if there's some like nuts and bolts things within the building to, they can have some time for that. Um, generally, we, what we did is we schedule an hour for that time. So basically, SCL and any nuts and bolts that's building specific, not district level, but building specific. So it might look a little different in Wayne. It might look a little different at the high school, et cetera, et cetera. Um, then from what we planned is one thirty to two forty. The teachers can then do self-directed time. We came up with a menu of things that we knew were coming due as suggestions for the teachers. They're not mandates in any way. It's just, you know, you might want to think about these things are coming. You need more time. Here's the work time. For example, I know a lot of teachers are planning on using that time to get ready for like parent teacher conferences because those start next week, believe it or not. So that was like one of those things that we suggested to them. Nobody's going around to check to make sure that they're working on parent teacher conferences. Teachers have the professional latitude to kind of decide, how do I want to use this time? What's most important for me to work on? Um, we also put together on, um, those days, a very simple anonymous survey. Cause we wanted to be able to report back like what the teachers use their time for. Um, so it's a very simple survey, just basically telling us what they use their time on for each of those days. Uh, so just to fill out that survey before they leave for the day, um, at two forty. So we really tried to honor what the principals brought forward. Uh, but also try to make sure that the teachers have some time. Again, I'm going to back up for a second. That like twelve thirty to one thirty window. The, um, there may be SCL, there may be some nuts and bolts things. There may be also where the principal says, hey, I know this is coming up. I'm going to give you more time. You can continue to work on your own or go kind of direct yourself, um, in the, the time that you're doing. Um, so that's kind of what we have put together for those early release days and we've scheduled those out. So everybody is clear on what can and cannot be done at that point moving forward. Um, the previously scheduled days are all, none of them are on Fridays. So again, those days are running basically twelve thirty to three, the normal day. Um, and those are the things that we're going to look at more like district level. Like if we need all elementary school teachers to take a look at the math curriculum, I'm just using that at random. Or, you know, things like that, uh, subject area committees, et cetera, those kinds of district level things. So that way there's a clear definition, um, between the previously scheduled days and then what's going on in the building on the added extra date. Um, and again, we'll bring back that data after those days are done, uh, from the survey. And again, just like we were talking about surveys, some people will answer, some people won't, but at least we'll have some data. Um, because we really want you guys to have a clear picture of what the teachers are doing and how important that time was to them. Um, and they know that, um, you know, individually, you guys had to answer to your communities for that too. So they want you to know that they thank you for that. Um, and they want you to know that they're using that time, um, you know, for good measures to actually help, um, their classrooms function, um, in a healthier way. So. So hopefully, and again, I can answer any other questions, but our first one, because the twenty second got snowed out. Um, the first one is Friday and again, we may not even, we're, we'll see what happens come Friday too. But, um, that's kind of where we are.
Patty?
Um, I just wondered if, and maybe this is not the right place for it, but if you're asking teachers on, at the end of these days to fill out a super quick survey, what did you do? Would it be possible to add a question alike? Or you could, you could craft it any way you wanted, but like, was it useful to you? Or was this effective for you? Or that, or maybe you're already doing that.
Yes, that's number five.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my mind.
Yeah. I just had a, a quick question, Jay, about, um, what kind of input did the teachers have in planning these days?
So that's part of what's going to happen on the first day, um, to, um, on Friday, if all goes well. Um, the principals were actually going to talk to their staff about how do you want to use the SCL time within the building? So it's the first one, they need, you know, to ask the question and get feedback from the staff. So that was part of what they are going to do on Friday.
I, I think it's important that the teachers are part of the, the planning because we did give this time for them to, to use to help with, with all the other things that were going on. So. Any other questions or comments? Jade?
Um, I, I know this one may be a remote one potentially or whatnot, but, um, I think, and I know Sean has voiced this as well, about making sure that these are educational days for the kids and not, okay, I'm going to have a movie and hang out with my friends and play outside and have recess and. And I think that that's, I, I don't know, that's been a big conversation about these days specifically because that's definitely a huge part of our intent is making sure that they're still getting full instruction those days. And it's not like a for holiday vacation and you know what I mean? I, I think.
And I would really encourage people, um, if you're as a board member getting calls about that, you need to divert them to the building principal because every building principal that's here will address that. But if they don't know, they can't address it. And I know again, there's this, this underlying, well, I don't know, I don't want anybody to know it was me or whatnot. If we don't know, we can't make it right. So if you get calls, emails, texts, whatever, you need to let the principals know. And the principals, I'm a hundred, I a hundred percent can say they will address that. So that moving forward, we don't have that situation because that makes our entire district look bad. So, and I don't want that. Our principals don't want that. And our teachers who are doing what they're supposed to do not want that either. So if something was happening, we need to know. And I know it's parents, so I can't stress that enough. You need to let the principal know. The principal will address that. So.
So Jay, you're saying that board members should contact the principal?
No, I'm saying.
No.
Those people need.
All the people.
Whoever's contacting you as a board member, divert them back to the building that, that the issue was in. You guys don't have to take that on. Um, and if you want to say, Jay just wants you to know, I got this, I asked them to call the principal. That's all you have to do. Don't go any further than that. Um, you can't solve, you as a board member is not going to solve that problem. That's our responsibility and we will take care of it if we know about it. I want to be very, very clear about that.
So as board members, if you're getting those kinds of emails and, and just say you've got an email from a teacher and they're like, oh, I don't get, go to my principal or whatever. Then that, that becomes our responsibility to go to Jay, not our responsibility to go to the principal. Our responsibility to go to Jay and let Jay handle it.
Because we absolutely want those days to be used. But again, if we don't, like, there's no way an individual principal, even I'm going to use Wayne Elementary School, our smallest school. They're not going to be able to monitor those remote days the entire time in every single class. They're going to hop in and out, so they're going to see snapshots, but they're not going to see the whole thing. So if a parent's having an issue and they contact you, get them to the principal, the principal can then go address that. So we can make this better and I, I truly believe we've come a long way in where we were two years ago to where we are right now. Do we still have improvement? Absolutely. But I feel like we can also get to that place where we're proud of what our remote days look like, um, as well. But we need to know. It's that simple. And we will work to make it better.
Somebody, somebody, Tyler?
You, Jay, you may have already answered this. Are we going to get to see that data on what the teachers think of the half days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's exactly, the survey is going to be, after all the days are complete, we'll put it together and we will definitely share it with the board. That was the purpose of the survey.
Okay. I, I, I figured that's what it was. I just wanted, I just, my own personal curiosity.
John?
So it has been made clear to all teachers what these Fridays are going to be like as of now.
So, so in general, because I, I thought I heard you, I thought I heard you say, maybe I understood, misunderstood that this Friday, principals are going to talk to the teachers about what they would like to see.
So that, like twelve thirty to one thirty time period. And then again, the one thirty to two forty, that's going to be totally teacher directed.
At all of these dates?
Yes, all of those extra days. Yeah, yeah. But yes, we have communicated that, Sean. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, thank you for waiting so patiently. We're going to be going on to the budget workshop. So we just, you can, but we, I just want to make sure we get our budget goal, the goal, if I can find it. Um, I sent, I think, did I, did that get sent out in the package? Yes, yeah. Okay, so. Okay, so this is what we, it's still in draft form, but so I just wanted to get the okay from all of you is um, to balance the needs of all members of the RSC school community while maintaining fiscal responsibility. All right, that's what we. Is that, is that okay? You want to go with it? Am I hearing anything from the Zoom people? Patty, Dane?
I like it.
Okay. So we'll go with that goal. Okay. Thank you.
So, um, I know it is what, it's like almost nine o'clock right now and let's talk budget, right? So, so much fun. So just very quickly, um, I want to, um, what we're going to do is what we've done in the past is we'll have a, a present, a slideshow presentation. And we're going to keep adding to it. Um, but just want to kind of highlight some things very quickly from the last meeting that we had on January nineteenth. So, um, again, when we met on the nineteenth, I talked about enrollment and staffing. I also talked about the directives that I've given the administrative team for myself as well as what the process and timeline, um, would be for us. So, um, Diane, if you want to scroll ahead, I'm on number four now. I know it'll take a second to catch up. I'm going, I'm trying to highlight so that we're not going to repeat a lot of information. So again, um, when you're looking at enrollments, a lot of the ED two seventy-nine is based on enrollments. Um, and we will come back and talk about this. These are last year's numbers. Um, and again, I don't want to get into that because it can be a little heavy. I will talk about all of the ED two seventy-nine at another date when we're a little fresher and we can kind of process it a little bit easier. Um, but it's basically based on enrollment counts and corporate evaluations. Um, so that's kind of what you're seeing on, um, this particular slide at this point. That includes, um, in district transfers, superintendent's agreements and tuition. Um, so as you're thinking about our full enrollment, remember we're not just talking about, uh, we get funding for everyone in our district. So I just want to make that clear to everyone. Even if we accept the superintendent's agreement and then obviously tuition students are paying tuition from the sending, um, uh, school districts or, or towns that are coming from. Fayette is the school system that we get the most tuition students from, just so everybody knows. Um, so again, staffing, um, I'm not going to read everything word for word again, just reminding you guys. I ask for, uh, uh, as they're looking at staff, to think of class sizes at the elementary level of fifteen to twenty students. If it's higher than, uh, twenty-one, we definitely need to look to potentially split that class out or split them into two. If a single class, uh, of fourteen or less, we still will make it standalone. So we're going to continue to have Wayne have individual classrooms. So I just want to, uh, kind of put that in there also. The middle school, ideally, we would like eighteen to twenty-two per team. We're going to talk a little bit more about that tonight. And then whoops, and then of course, the high school, we want to always have ten or more students in a class. Um, as we're running, um, classes at the high school. So what we looked at for team directives was an increase in overall spending between one and two percent from last year. The previous years, we've done zero percent. So, um, we've done quite a bit with that. Again, we're trying to look at transparency, transparency and equity of spending practices. So instructional lines, we're built thinking that we basically have three title one schools, um, elementary schools in our district. Mount Vernon Elementary School, Wayne Elementary School and Reed Field Elementary School is also kind of on that list. And we also have tier three schools, again, Mount Vernon and Wayne School. So we tried to give a little bump to those schools as a priority, um, within this. Obviously, we're trying to reduce wish list budgeting. You'll see what the principals present today is really, um, those really important pieces that they feel, um, need to be part of their budget going forward. Um, just again, quick information for you, elementary pre-K. Um, we have sixteen per session. We have two sessions, a morning and an afternoon at, um, Reed Field Elementary School. Any students from Wayne that participate in pre-kindergarten are part of Reed Field Elementary School. Then when they hit kindergarten, they go back to Wayne Elementary School. Mount Vernon has a cap of eight, excuse me. Manchester has a cap of eight per session. They have two sessions. The reason why they're at eight is because of staffing. They do not have, um, an ed tech in Manchester at this point. Um, and especially the last couple of years, the numbers have been down in pre-K a little bit more than normal. So, uh, Mount Vernon has one session with a part-time ed tech in it. And again, the cap is sixteen there. Um, other staff, we're our regular ed ed techs. We're not looking at any changes. The guidance department, uh, is at five. I put no changes, but we're gonna, I'm going to bring that up again. Nursing, um, again, we have to have a discussion about the Mount Vernon and Wayne nurse going forward. And then library, we're not suggesting any changes, um, going forward into next year. These are the amounts that we used for budgeting purposes with our staff, uh, two hundred per student. Um, based on October first student count, curriculum supplies, books and classroom furniture. We have an additional fifty dollars per student for title one identified schools and twenty-five, an additional twenty-five per student for the tier three schools. And again, this is a repeat, um, from the last, um, meeting that we had. And again, as we're looking at new district-wide curriculum materials, what we're doing is adding those to the budget, to the budgets of the schools proportionally based on, on their population through elementary schools. And we kind of do that on the back end. So that way, the new curriculum supplies that are coming in are being tagged to their regular budget lines. But we're have a way to kind of get it in on the back door there, so to speak, um, moving forward. We also, uh, still continue to focus on professional development. We have allotted two hundred for staff, um, to include registration, travel and other expenses. Um, this is not the course reimbursement line, just so you know. So this is like those workshops that may come up during the year that are valuable to teachers. And they like come and say, oh, can I go to this workshop kind of thing? The principals are the ones that decide that based on what their priorities are, um, within their building. Um, yeah, I won't get too much further into that at this point. Um, again, the whole idea is we don't want this process to become contentious between the towns and the district. And as a, an administrative team, we will be having multiple discussions, um, about the budget and the factors affecting it. And we will make decisions as a team, um, based on feedback that we receive from the board around, um, suggested changes. based on feedback that we receive from the board around suggested changes going forward. So having said all of that, tonight, you're going to hear for the first time from the principals. For the sake of time, Janet Delmar, the Mount Vernon principal, is going to talk about the elementary budget. Kristin Levak will talk about the middle school budget. And then I will do the high school budget. Again, just as a, a quick fill-in because we don't have a principal yet, but I think I have all the information I need for that kind of at this point. So Diane, if you want to jump right to, I'm not going to repeat the directives again because they've already heard those. I'll jump right to the elementary schools and all.
Okay, so you got all that, I'm sure, memorized. I'm lucky. I don't have a lot to share with you above what Superintendent Scher has already mentioned. A quick thing, Manchester is kind of looking at their numbers and of course, that tends to change even between now and throughout the summer, but they're looking at possibly an additional teacher depending on kindergarten numbers. And then a request has been put in for a social worker, a full-time social worker to be shared between all four elementary schools. And this is really thought, given careful consideration to think about the complex needs, the social emotional needs of our student population. And we thought this person can serve above and beyond what guidance counselors can do, particularly with psychosocial assessments, assessing students for various needs in counseling above and beyond guidance counselors such as direct therapeutic services, individual, family or group therapy around preventing crisis management, including safety assessments, and just advocating for student services, including but maybe not limited to just what's offered in community resources, collaboration with other professionals, also additional training for staff and workshops for, workshop time for teachers and other school staff, conducting possibly home visits. All those that kind of like next level that we sometimes think of a KVH kind of ideas only here at the elementary level. It's a real need that we have identified. So that's it for elementary and I'll turn it over to Dr. Levak.
All right. So for the middle school, we are asking for two additional teachers. Last, this, this school year, our numbers bumped up quite a bit. So we've been just over 300 pretty much all school year. And in consideration of, we have an alternative ed program, so those numbers are slightly smaller for that one teacher in the ed techs. But if you look at the average, we'd be just over, be about 22.3 if we stayed at 300 students for just the team teachers per classroom. So if we could have the two additional teachers, one of those teachers would be used specifically for math because right now we have some math classes that have 28 students in it, and that's just way too big for a math class. It's not conducive to the student learning. And then we'd have another teacher who would, we would have a two teacher team. Right now, we have one four teacher team with the idea that we wanted that to only be a one-year setup because it's much better when it's, it's smaller than four teachers on a team. And that two teacher team would have 45, approximately 45 students that would be on it. We are also looking to have an addition of a, another halftime dean of students. Right now, we have a halftime dean of students and he does a great job. But again, with the increasing number of students and that's projected to stay, we would like to add another halftime dean of students. So it'd be a similar kind of format to what is currently at the high school with the two deans of students and the principal. And then with the two new teachers, we'd also like to have, this is a stipend position of about 2,000 per team leader position. But right now, world language and unified arts, which is our band, or sorry, music, health, phys ed, and art and world language are one team. And I'd like to make that to two, divided into two teams for the team leader positions. Because what the world language teachers are doing is vastly different than what we see with the unified arts. Unified arts is on a quarter schedule and world language is on a year schedule. And then they're, you know, everything that they're doing is just completely different. So I'd like to separate that. And then I'd also like to have another team teacher for that new team that we're creating. That's it.
I'm going to jump ahead. So with the high school, oh, I got to get on the right. There'll be a couple extra slides here. What I did is tried to break it up per department. So the science department is looking for some electronic balances. The old ones are obviously old and ineffective. They'd be used across physical science, biology and chemistry. So share the cross that department. Right now, again, we talked about Mr. DeAngelis. He's been teaching the AP, excuse me, the honors level physics. There's a request to turn honors level physics into AP physics one and two. It's currently not offered. It's only offered as honors physics. The, in order to do that, there's some significant teacher training that needs to take place and it would take about a year to do that. So for school year 2023, excuse me, 22, 23, we'd be looking to do the training and get the training in and then actually offer it to students in 23, 24. It would, we'd still continue to offer honor physics, but to convert it to AP physics is going to take a whole year. And again, they have to go through training and get certified by the AP board in order to be able to teach that class. They are looking for robotics supplies. They are looking to add five more kits to allow for smaller work groups. It's a very popular class for obvious reasons, very hands-on. But in order, again, when you're looking at the way it is, they started it with six kits and getting more kits would help the class have smaller work groups. Ninth grade science is looking to update their textbooks to digital textbooks, as well as chemistry and environmental science for grades 10 and 11 are also looking for updates to their textbooks. I'm going to apologize. I don't know the exact dates on those, but one of them is over 10 or 15 years old, I know for sure. So it's definitely time to have that conversation. Spanish is also looking to update their textbooks with digital access. The library has a database subscription that is in the cost of $5,100. So again, that's, that's a fair, that's split between the middle school and the high school. So I wanted to be clear about that. Even though it's in the high school, middle school and high school both use those database, that database access. The math department is looking for a set of calculators, like the T-185s or whatever they're called. So they could do graphing and other things like that with the calculators. Social studies is looking to add one teacher to the department. And again, that particular department has four teachers, not five. So they are talking about taking personal finance, which is a board elective and moving that back into the social studies realm. So we would need to hire specifically a teacher to take care of that class, which again, is a, a graduation requirement. The living history program is something that's been going on in Maranica for a while. However, it's been paid for in many different ways. And I just think it's, it should be put before the board so that you guys understand the cost and the number of students that are being served by that program. And I have that information for you in just a minute. Industrial arts is looking to replace some drill presses and they have a laser. I'm not going to be able to do this justice in any way, shape or form. So Mr. Stockford, if you're online watching, I apologize to you. But there is a laser piece that they use as part of the course that needs to be replaced and updated. So I just listed it as a laser because I'm really not sure exactly what it is. But he could absolutely, if you want to talk with Mr. Stockford, he is absolutely willing to come in and talk to you guys about, about that going forward. So that's pretty significant at the high school, but I also think there's some very important things that we'll have to prioritize as a board as to where we put our money going forward at that time. So the last slide is that we will have a first draft completed budget to you guys on March 9th. That will include all of these things. Plus, the other departments that are going to be sharing with you over the course of the next several meetings, they will be sharing with you. We'll give you a first draft of March 9th with everything in that. And at that March 9th meeting, we'll also talk about the ED-279. So those of you that are new to that will kind of have a basic understanding of how that whole allocation of state funding versus local funding and how we kind of have to work within those parameters. But we will do that on March 9th as well. I do have a handout today that has prices attached and keep in mind their estimates, but we will send it around here in just a minute. Again, don't get sticker shock when you look at it. It's for you to think about, reflect on, and then we will be revisiting saying, what are we going to keep and what do we need to let go or push off to another year? So we'll be working with that. So having said that, I will turn it back over to our board chair. So S or F, excuse me, positions, because that's something the board has endorsed with grant funds. On the board or on the slideshow, I put up those positions that are coming to an end at the end of this year. And we are going to have to make a decision as a board whether we want to extend those or if we're just going to leave them as is, meaning we're not going to fund them and we'll revert back to what it was. So nurse position, which is the person who is covering Mount Vernon and Wayne, that ends at the end of this year. The COVID nurse who has been helping with pool testing and other sort of things, again, was a one-year position. Elementary guidance, we've only had in place since about, actually, January. So we will have spent about six months of that salary. So depending on what the board wants to do, if they want to fund it for another year, we probably have about six months of salary still in that budget line. And the educational technology we're using at the high school level, again, that's going to be a position that we actually haven't hit a lot out of yet. So again, that could be, there could be some flexibility of local funds approved by the board and using the remaining grant funds to pay one more year, depending on what you want to do. And I just wanted to put it on your radar, the halftime interventionist at Wayne. We have one more year through grant funding, but that will be coming due not this year, but the next year. So I just wanted you to have that in your back, back pocket so that as you're thinking about this and trying to prioritize what we're going to do as a district, that you have it in the back of your mind, where, where do you want those priorities to be? So I apologize, I missed that slide.
Are there any questions from board for anyone that just presented?
So $715,000 is, what does this number mean, I guess? I don't want to say any assumptions, so.
Yep, no, what that number means is all of those things we just presented to you, that's the price tag if we were to approve all of those things.
Right, but it's this total budget change. What's that a change, that a change, like in addition to the current?
Addition to the current budget. Yes, thank you, Sean. As with anything, budget time is something we have to really think carefully about. What do the priorities need to be going forward? We're not going to be able to do it all. And that's why it was important to share with you tonight and let you see at least what that change could look like.
Tyler?
Um, can you send that doc, email me that document real quick just so I can look at it?
Yep.
Okay. In looking at just what I was, Brendan, not having the sticker price in front of me. So the high school textbooks, those are 10 to 15 years. My question on the digit, my, my question is more on the. Okay.
Sorry about that, Tyler.
Having been in the high school in the last five years, I, I don't doubt it. My question is on the digital textbooks is having used textbooks on a laptop, because I know that's what everybody has, it's a pain. I would be open to replacing the textbooks and I'm 100% for replacing the textbooks, but I'd rather see paper textbooks, especially for the ninth graders when they make that transition. Because I just think that's just going to provide another obstacle to learning. I mean, I've been in college, so I've had to use digital textbooks and they're awful. I get, there probably, there's a cost reduction there, but I would rather see we spend the extra money and get good, you know, paper textbooks.
I guess Tyler, to your point too, because I definitely agree, Jade. I completely agree. Like just recently, you know, going through school, it was so much harder to navigate through an online textbook, but also a lot of times it was kind of like digital codes that are one-time uses and then you have to continue with like random subscriptions or they're only good for a certain number of years. Whereas if you have a paper copy, it may be a little bit more expensive upfront, but you're going to get a lot more out of it in the long run. So I think that's definitely something to be considering as well as what those, you know, how many years do you have access to those textbooks? How many students can actually get those textbooks when we pay for them? Whereas if you have a paper copy, it's yours if you can pass it on. And it's so much nicer to pick up paper sometimes and a book in your hand and be able to look at it for kids who don't have internet or access at home. It's a huge, it's a huge thing. Not everybody has that ability to have that access.
So what was the rationale behind the digital as opposed to paper?
Yeah, I'm going to be very honest with you. I, they just submitted it to me and I haven't had a chance to follow up with them yet. But I will follow up just to see if there's a, because a lot of times teachers will choose like one or the other and both options are there. They'll just choose like digital because it's a little cheaper and they think it's more likely to get approved versus, you know, the other way. So I will follow up with all of those teachers that are asking for digital and see what the difference is in cost and have that available.
My concern, if it's just for the cost, I'd like to know if there's another reason why they wanted digital. Kathy, did you have your hand up?
Jade, go ahead.
Yeah, real quickly, I'm, I'm with you guys too. I like paper books too. And but when you get a subscription to digital textbooks, it's funny, we all have good questions like digital textbooks. Can you download that file on your computer? Or is that just because your concern is what happens if they don't have access to the internet? As long as they can download it at school that year onto their computer, because I know I download PDF files, books all the time, and then I don't like them as much as physical books. I buy physical books. But I was just wondering if that's an option. Do we have that option if we're buying these things and downloading it for the kids to have? Even if they don't have.
I'll have to go find out. I don't have the answer right now. That's a great question.
Yeah, I'm a fan of less screen time. I guess my question was, if these are 10 or 15 years old, have these been on the budget every year and they've been like not?
No.
Okay.
No, no. I, I asked for, I opened that door being at the high school right now. I, I kind of opened that door and I'll take full responsibility. I said, what do you guys need? And we need to make sure that the board is aware of these important pieces. And it shouldn't be something that we're srounging to try to fix after the fact. I'd rather put it up front and put it on the table now. And we make our decision, but at least we can make an honest decision, a transparent decision for everybody involved. So that's kind of, I opened the door. So that's why the, the high school's a little bit more than it has been in the past. So great question.
John? Well, I guess I'm on the other side. I mean, we're in the 21st century. I use digital documents. I, they bring these heavy big books into my eye, chuck them. My kids love the books on the computer. They love being on the computer. Things get updated quicker on the computer. Digital textbooks, we can argue back and forth all day long, if you like them or not, but.
That's why I wanted to know what the rationale.
Right, yeah, I guess I'd like to hear the rationale, but I'm the opposite. You can update. I know like we have digital subscriptions at the state house and it's. You can update. I know like we have digital subscriptions at the state house and it's great because it's not outdated. Things get updated in real time.
Yeah, I guess that would be the other question is with the digital copies, do they come with the updates? So like, say there's a, a new update that comes out and say the, I don't know, you get it for five years or something. And there's an update that comes out in two years. Well, if we had the paper copy, we wouldn't get that update. But if it was included, if we had like a five year or whatever, then I don't know. So that's just something else I would look at because they may provide those updates, which could be super beneficial as well.
I will gather all that information to bring forward because those are great questions.
Anyone else?
Um, moving to the, what's the reason? I mean, I probably get the reason, but someone already texted me, so I'm going to ask this question. What's the reason for the social worker?
Yep. Do you, are you comfortable answering?
If you're not, I can wait. I just wanted to hold on to it.
I'm not the greatest person to distinguish, but a guidance counselor's role and their qualifications and credentials are different than that of a licensed social worker and what they can do in, in terms of supporting students. So their level of counseling is very different than guidance. So maybe you have more specifics than that because.
And then what's the difference between a school counselor and a social worker, I guess? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll redo what Jay often says, let me get that information for you. But the generic thing is a school guidance counselor is a different certification and a different level of what they can provide for counseling services. As a licensed social worker is more of, they can do like therapy with students and address more clinically severe need. And we're seeing that across the board as a need at the elementary schools.
I would just echo the same as what Janet was saying, but at the same time, Janet and I had this on our radar for about four years. Because there, there were issues prior to the pandemic and students needed support, whether it's young kids just trans, transitioning into a public school, dealing with anxiety issues, depression, all of that. A social worker has the higher level of experience and expertise and, and access to resources that guided students do not. Prior to coming to Maranica at my previous school, we had two social workers and they, they really made a difference for families and students that needed that support. So that's, that's the reason for the reply.
So we have guidance counselors. We don't have school counselors. There's a difference because some schools have school counselors.
Correct, correct.
We're also requesting this for the regular education population of a school. So we do have a social worker, but their focus is working with students, I think at the elementary and middle, but that are receiving special education services.
So this would be in addition to our counselor position, would we be looking where, it sounds like the social worker would be able to do more? Would we be looking at eliminating the counselor position?
So the social worker can do something different than, not saying it's more than, but it's something different than the school counselor piece. So we're putting that out there for you guys to consider.
So not replacing.
But you're not replacing.
In addition to.
Right now, we're not, yes, in addition to.
Do you think that there is one available?
It's David and then somebody online and then Kelsey. Okay, somebody, Tyler?
Um, yeah. I, I, again, I still don't have, my email's not updating for whatever reason. I think the school's wifi is being slow. But not seeing the sticker price in front of me. I, I guess I'm open to having both, but I just, I think it's a lot of money to spend in addition to adding another guidance counselor when we could revert back to a split system in the elementary schools and have the guidance counselor or have the social, I, I'm, I definitely agree we need a social worker and I, I would like to see it extended to the high school and middle school as well because, just because you're older, you still need those services. And if it means spending a little bit of extra money to make it work, I, I, I could see that being extremely valuable at the high school and middle school level. Because the anxieties are different, but they're still there. And I, and that's not to impugn the guidance team that's at the high school and middle school now. Yeah, that's all I have to say on that one.
Anyone else? Okay, I hope we can get one. Do you think that the odds of getting one?
That's, right, right. Before we can, it has to be approved before we can go looking, but Maranica Cook's a great place to work, so I'm confident that we can probably invite somebody to be part of our team.
If Tyler was comfortable sharing his phone number, I can shoot you a text of the budget. I just took a picture.
Tyler, we just got it. It just came in.
Anyway, I saw him got it. I don't know why, but my cell is two oh seven nine three one seven one nine five. I don't really care, like if you, if anybody knows my cellphone, it's public.
Are there any other questions or discussion about budget from the board?
If I heard you right, so what, what does that timeframe give us? We don't get the full budget till March nine, like the whole pool, like. I don't want to be, sometimes we have a tendency to be pushed against a wall and I don't want to be pushed against the wall.
Right. I, like, if you, like I'm saying, March ninth, which is the second, second meeting in March or the, I'm going to say the second meeting in March. Just because the, the business meeting usually takes longer and we run into situations like we're running into today. I wanted you guys to have plenty of time to ask questions and look, but we'll, as soon as we have it ready, we'll get it out to you. But the ninth would be the latest. Also, the ED two seventy-nine is still preliminary, so we're waiting for final. I don't think ours is going to change much, but we're waiting on the final for that. Plus, we need to wait for health insurance costs and dental benefit increases. And we also do stuff with oil and gas bidding as well so that we have that. So there's a lot of pieces that have to go.
No, no, I get it, but there's more pieces we can get earlier. I think that's helpful. Like, I don't want you to hold back pieces that you have, I guess.
Okay.
It's my request. Maybe that's no one else's request, but I think this is going to be an interesting process.
It is, it is.
The more pieces we can have, sooner the better, but that's just.
Absolutely. So I totally hear that and excuse me, we have stuff, we'll put it on. That's one of the reasons why I wanted you to see at least this one tonight, so you had an idea of kind of what was coming very fair.
Are there any citizen comments regarding the budget?
Oh, looks like Diane, nope.
No? And is there any more discussion from the board? Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda, but before we adjourn, we would like to have a little report out on how we did tonight with our norms.
We did great. We always do great. Giving kids at the center, check. Sharing your ideas, sharing airtime, did great. Strive to have everyone who wants to speak do so before another person goes again. Kathy, you always do a great job helping delegate that. Be solutions oriented while assuming positive intent. Yep. Listen openly to all opinions and possibilities to understand. Yep. Did we show respect to each other? Yep. I think so. Don't interrupt. We didn't interrupt each other. We always agree to disagree if that's the case. And be responsible for positive tone of voice and body language. Check, check, check. Good job, guys.
Great. Thank you, Kelsey, for keeping an eye on that and helping us to stick to our norms. We have a motion to.
Do a jam.
All those data? We have to roll call. You don't even have to roll call now. Okay. Thank you, everyone.